Morning, everyone.
Morning. Good morning, guys.
So we called the Montgomery County Planning Commission Board Meeting for Wednesday, February 8th. To order, the record shows that we have Nicole here in the boardroom. And Jonathan Rendy online. Anybody else join us online, board members? See anybody? Jill said she's going to be late. I think Bob mentioned that he's online. Scott? Hold on a second. That's what makes my volume sound. So we'll start with board comments. I'm not getting an echo.
I don't hear.
Getting an echo from this.
Hey, Steve, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, good morning. Just a couple of comments. I want to thank Scott for coming to the Montgomery County Consortium of Managers meeting last week representing the Planning Commission. And he provided all the managers in the room with a really good and thorough update of what's been going on with the County Planning Commission, provided some insight on some things that are happening in the future. I think it was very well receptive and very much appreciated. And I can tell you that one of the things we all walked away from after the presentation and meeting is that there needs to be more help at the Planning Commission level for Scott and his team. There needs to be more planners with all the activity that's happening. So I just wanted to at least thank Scott. Even though I'm not in the room, I wanted to mention that he did a great job. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Yeah, I was going to cover that in the protection report, but.
Oh.
That's great to hear.
It just saves us time on the back end.
Yeah. Whatever I can do to help.
Yeah. Okay. Any other board comments? Nicole, Dolsie?
Not for me.
Jonathan?
No, not for me, but thanks for the opportunity.
And any other board members? And we'll move on to our approval of the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the Montgomery County Planning Commission Board Meeting Minutes for January 11th that are in front of us. I have to move their second.
I'll second.
Any comments or corrections?
No.
On the bits. Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing none? Any public comments? Staff comments before we get started? Nobody in the room? Anybody online? Public comment? If you're a member of the public and would like to make a comment, please unmute yourself and give us your name and the municipality you live in. Any public comment? Seeing none? Then we'll move on to our first agenda, first full agenda item, which is community planning assistance contracts. And I'll call on Eric to go over Collegeville Borough and North Wales Borough.
Great. Thank you. So consideration for two planning assistant contract renewals, Collegeville and North Wales. Both started in January. Both are standard contracts. You can see in the resolution, the numbers are exactly the same for that. It's Collegeville. We've been working on zoning for them on their main street. We've been working very closely with Ursinus College as well, trying to make it a more active, vibrant Main Street area. Ursinus has heard from students that haven't selected Ursinus in the past, that have chosen Susquehanna or Gettysburg, that that's been the biggest difference, is that those schools had a more active, vibrant Main Street and Ursinus Collegeville did not. So they're working closely. Ursinus owns a lot of land along Main Street and is an active participant in that and potentially, you know, working with developers to develop those. So we've been revising the whole Main Street Commercial District. That's nearing its final stages. Previous contract, we had worked on a gateway district, sort of at the the Fifth and Main, kind of the heart of the borough, right with the college and the borough owning property there. And that ordinance is basically the template for the rest of Main Street as well. So they're doing really good. We also work very closely with their CDC and support economic development activities. And we'll be updating their revitalization plan under a new contract as well. North Wales Borough, we're in the process of finalizing a full comprehensive zoning renewal for them. We've been working on that for the last year and a half or so. And so we'll be finishing that and getting that adopted in this term. Prior to the zoning work, we did a downtown walk audit and audited all of their sidewalks and downtown walkability. And they adopted that. That's been serving as a basis for writing some grants for both sidewalk improvement and additional sidewalk and pedestrian infrastructure. So both those contracts again run January 1st to December 31st of 2025. And just an update on the other ones. Abington will be approved this month at their February 19th Commissioners Meeting. So we'll have that for the March meeting. Hat Borough we have in hand, but it didn't come in soon enough for this agenda. So those will be the last two. And we're still working with Warrsester and they're still under consideration.
That was. So before we get into any questions, I'm going to bring the resolution online. So before us, we have MCPC Resolution 23 dash 2.1, Community Planning Assistance Contracts, Resolution of February 8th, 2023. We have two contracts in front of us, six by core. Collegeville Borough from January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2025, total cost $77,868, split equally between the municipality and county. We have contract 656, North Wales Borough, January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2025, same, same exact amount and same exact split. Is that correct?
Yes.
Got it. And I, is there a motion?
I'll move to accept the contracts.
Is there a second?
Second?
The move's been seconded. So any comments or questions from board members?
Hey, Eric, you may have mentioned this. Is there, who were the planners assigned to these two communities?
Yeah, I should probably always mention that. So Naomi Crim is the Collegeville Borough Planner and Tim Canetti is the North Wales Borough Community Planner.
Excellent.
Okay. Thank you.
Who was that? I'm sorry.
Naomi Crim for Collegeville. And Tim Canetti for North Wales.
So Collegeville, so there was an effort to, to work with the Borough with, Ursinus was working with the Borough and then they had an election change? And is there, do you have any sense whether the newly elected body or leadership in Collegeville has warmed up to working with Ursinus?
Yeah, we've got no indication that they're not. The, some of the, I think finances on Ursinus have changed. They have a new president and they took a pause to get the new president up to date on sort of all the initiatives that they're working on. But the fact that they're still moving forward with the Main Street Commercial District tells me that there, there's still the energy and desire to do that.
Yeah, my understanding is.
So I. I can add a little flavor to that. I used to be on the CDC in Collegeville. Probably a decade ago, the Borough leadership and the college did not get along. I don't know for what reason, but they did not get along. As you had mentioned, there's been the last two or three years, a shift in the Borough Council and, and also the presidency of the college. And now both the college and the Borough Council, I believe, are working pretty hand in hand to address the concerns that students who don't go to Ursinus have expressed, which is it's a dead Main Street. There's nothing there for them to do. You look across the river at Phoenixville and it's alive and vibrant, yet at Ursinus, you've got, I don't know, I think 1,500 students there for eight months of the year and nothing is really going on outside the campus. So I, I, I think it's a real good sign that both entities are working together to make that Main Street a more vibrant community.
My understanding is that there was that effort that Jonathan's talking about, but then there was the election, I think, you know, a year and a half ago, changed some of the energy in Collegeville towards some of the changes. So I wasn't sure if that was still the case. I have, I mean, I have a couple of clients that were trying to do work in there and things kind of came to a halt.
Yeah, I mean, we're right now producing a document to educate the property owners in the borough on the impact of the zoning changes. And so it should be heading to council in the next few months. So nothing is apparently changed on our end. And I think just reinforcing that, though, that the opportunities here are real because Ursinus does own so much of the property along Main Street and that they can work with developers and actually help implement the zoning. So it's not just going to be relying on existing or private property owners to, to take advantage of the new ordinance. The college has the land and I believe has been in some contact with some developers to potentially move forward.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions from board members? Staff, public? Anybody? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Great. Thanks, Eric. Call on our next agenda item, Monco 2040 Implementation Report for 2023. And I'll call on Ann.
Good morning.
At the next 45 minutes, do whatever you want to do.
And you want to bring a drink up there? So we're talking about those. Knowing your schedule, it can be widen that venue.
You can go over Monco 2040. You do the annual summary. You can talk about whatever it is you want to. It's all you're in.
All right. Well, we'll start with the implementation report. We're not quite at the beginning of it.
So we go from you into hazard mitigation and household waste.
Goes downhill. Switch flows uphill.
All right. Well, you have all seen this implementation update presentation before. I'm going to try to focus a little bit on the projects that maybe we don't know as much about, because you have already heard about all of the work that the Planning Commission has done over the last year. You had a work program presented to you, which talked about our highlights from 2022 and what we hope to do in 2023. So I'm going to try to talk a little bit more about some of the work that the other departments here in the county do, as much as I have been updated on it, because I think that it's important to, to shine a little bit of light on those projects as well. But you already know that Monco 2040 was adopted some time ago. We are hard at work on Monco 2050. And I think that this has been a really successful planning effort for us. We, we look back on this plan a lot. It really does shape the work that we do here and that is a good thing. The plan has three different themes. The first one is connected communities, that people want to be connected and a part of their, their bigger community. But the, the conversation we just had about Ursinus College is indicative. The goals of the connected communities theme are to encourage collaboration and partnerships among us and the outside governments and businesses that we work with, to improve transportation quality throughout the county and to give workers more options on how to commute to and from work, to expand and connect the county trail system with the other local trails that our municipalities are working on, and to support strong downtowns and destinations so that college students and others have important vital places to go. In 2022, this was a robust section full of interesting projects that not just the Planning Commission, but other departments did as well. We have an active Office of Veterans Affairs that started a new Veterans Response in partnership with the Coastal Medical Center to, to work with our, our county's veteran population to make sure they have the support and healthcare options that they need. The, the county has also undertaken a lot of diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives, including a racial equity learning community. This is, that's now in its second year of, of training county staff and various board members on, on a lot of different topics related to racial equity, how it connects to our work and how it connects to the outside world. And then there's the, the ongoing Justice Center Construction Project across the street. It's been neat to watch the progress that's being made there as the steel beams get inserted.
Kind of looks like a building.
It, it does actually look like it's going to be something. So that's kind of cool. Data sharing and transparency. We've got the, the ongoing implementation of the county's GIS plan. That's something that I think is in the process of being updated and really honestly is crucial to us as we move forward with our own comprehensive planning work. And we also increasingly rely on online dashboards for important and timely information. Our, our ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and the data that relates to that was consistently updated throughout the year and, and provided an important source of information for people. For a lot of public health partnerships that are listed in the report. We've got ongoing COVID-19 testing and vaccine sites that continue to operate throughout the county. Public health staff provides guidance to educators, to business owners and others who, who need up-to-date information on how they should be supporting their staff. We have public health workers who work on things like food waste reduction in some of our school districts. They build community gardens and work with some of the staff here, actually, on sacred school projects. That's an ongoing thing. And outreach on reducing homelessness via the county's continuum of care membership. And a new partnership with the maternal and early childhood consortium to prioritize maternal well-being and family health. Also in 2022, a lot of transportation infrastructure improvements. We had several bridges that were damaged during Hurricane Ida. The work to, to fix those continues. In 2022, we had five county-owned bridges that were reconstructed completely in, in that last year. This had a lot of grant fund forwarded to us through a variety of state-wide programs. And we completed the chip update for fiscal year 2023 to 2034. Trail construction, open space planning efforts continued as well. Have heard about the Chester Valley Trail Extension, which started construction in 2022 and is about to be officially complete. The Penny Pack Trail Crossing improvements at Turwood Road were completed. We received a C2P2 grant from ECNR, Open Space Acquisition and Perkium Township. And we began architectural and design services down the road at the Trail Junction Center. I think that's going to be a really neat project when it's complete. And also in 2022, supporting strong downtowns and community destinations. I already mentioned the COVID-19 related guidance to businesses. And we had some really neat events at the Trail Junction Center as well, not just with Planning Commission staff, but with outside organizations and our Health and Human Services partners. Ellen has been really doing a lot of work with some outside arts organizations to make that a more lively space for people to gather. The county also granted CDPG funds to support a variety of downtown improvements, as well as an after-school and recreation program. And I wanted to also note that our outside public transportation partners in SEPTA are doing a lot of planning work as well, including Bus Revolution Project, Reimagining Regional Rail, Transit Support of Communities, which is a little bit like our transit-oriented development work here at the county, as well as station area planning for the proposed high-speed line extension to community. In 2023, I guess, in short, I expect to see more of the same, more bridge work that continues, more trail expansion work, more education from our Health and Human Services partners on ways that we can stay healthy. And I'll move on to sustainable places. This theme, I guess, focuses around how we have amazing neighborhoods and communities and how they need to be sustained for the long term so that they stay that way. The goals of sustainable places include supporting a modern, resilient, green and energy-efficient infrastructure network, improving stormwater management, conserving our natural resources in other sensitive areas, providing opportunities for residents to be healthy and exercise, making housing choices available for the needs of all people and enhancing community character. In 2022, we worked to address water quality here at the Planning Commission by implementing the county's MS4 permit. And I wanted to also mention the County Conservation District. They do a lot of work in this arena as well. They completed several stream bank stabilization and repairing buffer projects last year. We also worked to preserve open space and improve the park system here. A lot of our park staff participated in ongoing post-Ida cleanup at many of our parks. We also, as a county, continued work toward opening Sunrise Mill as a historic site for everyone to enjoy. And many of our county parks are undergoing a master planning process. And last year, Green Lane Park was one of those parks. It'll be interesting to see what comes next for, for that part of the county. You already know, because you're going to hear more about it today, that we are still working on the update to the county's Hazard Navigation Plan. And we have a continued commitment to sustainability in a lot of ways through our renewable energy purchases and household hazardous waste events, which are a really popular feature that we organize here through the Planning Commission. Also in 2022, we supported housing needs of county residents through the Your Way Home Partnership, as well as the Homes for All Initiative that continues to be implemented. County's Home Partnerships Program Funds went toward a variety of projects, including Suzy Clement's House in North Hills Manor, both of which opened last year. We promoted access to healthy lifestyles. There are a lot of interesting projects that fall under this category that happen in our Health and Human Services Department. We participated in the Keystone Kids Go Program. There's the popular Montgomery County Trail Challenge, which continues to grow each year with the more and more applicants enrolling and, and completing the challenge, as well as the Story Walk Program. I think I posted a picture of that somewhere in this presentation, but that gives people a book, a kid-appropriate book to read as they walk along the trail. It's a neat way of getting people out to, to do a physical activity when they might not have otherwise done that.
People can do that? They can actually read while they're walking?
Well, I'm kind of like being able to rub your stomach and pat your head at the same time. Takes a little bit of extra effort.
People can do that, too?
Yeah.
Is it something they read and, and read something relevant to what's on the trail? Or?
It looks like this. Looks like this. So there are, you know, signs.
It's a book or it's on?
It, it truly looks like this. So there are signs posted along the trail with a page or so on each sign. You can walk slowly and do it, but that way you can, you know, it's a, it's an added incentive to, to get someone who might be reluctant to, to go for the walk, to.
Do they read it at the sign?
Yeah.
And then they, and then they walk, then they walk.
The page to page.
It's a real challenge. I tried to wrap his mind around it. This is going to be the thing I talk about today.
So I saw, I saw something like this in a, in a Maryland park with my grandkids and they couldn't get enough of the story walk. They would run to the next one to read out loud what the story was and then they'd go to the next one. And it was really something that engaged them to keep walking and keep finding the next page, if you will, in the story. I think it's great, Ann.
Thank you.
Steve, we do this in Lansdale, too, on our trails, where you go from sign to sign and read.
Got to get with this.
Everything happens in Lansdale.
So yeah, page by page, the book gets disassembled and reassembled on the sign.
Right. No, I just, I thought actually they were reading while they're walking at the speed. Highly coordinated. And I think Scott has.
Always got to do that.
It's called multitasking to the extreme. If necessary, so.
All right. And enhancing community character. This is, this has a lot of information on some of the work that our Department of Public Safety has done over the last year and plans to do next year. They completed their 911 Systems Plan for Pima and notably finished the final pieces of the Public Safety Radio System Transition and took down the old radio antenna. And so that was a big multi-year project for them, for sure. In 2023, apparently, we're all going on a story walk. Maybe that would be our away meeting. But again, more of the same, funding downtown improvements through our CDPG program that funds a lot of housing work, but also infrastructure improvements like sidewalks, for example. We have a lot of sidewalk projects that get funded that way. Continuing our sustainability-themed work here, the creation of a food policy council, that's something that I'm personally working on a lot right now. I think that's something that's really going to be important for the county going forward. Continuing, implementing the Homes for All Plan. I think that we have, we are working right now with a consultant that is doing a lot of interesting work on messaging around housing affordability. And I think that's something that will play into not just the work that we're doing here, but also our comprehensive planning work. And again, more public health partnerships as well and, and supporting the upgrades that are taking place at the county's public safety facilities. Last but not least, vibrant economy, a strong economy is critical, as you all know. This is something that allows residents, residents to earn and spend more and gives governments the flexibility to make the needed infrastructure improvements that they desire. The goals of the vibrant economy section include improving transportation access to businesses, encouraging development and transformative investment where infrastructure already exists. Oh, how did I go back? Attracting and retaining businesses and vital community assets, adapting to changing market conditions and facilitating the marketing of the county and its assets. In 2022, we continue to move major transportation projects forward, including reconstruction work along the mainline stem of the Pennsylvania Turnpike, continuing widening of northeast extension, and initiating the Schuylkill River Passenger Rail Authority Partnership. I still got to get used to that acronym. It's a long one. Continuing to bring visitors and jobs to the county. The tourism board works tirelessly, so for sure. And it's only one bullet point here, but this is a big one. Adopting the Final Recovery Plan for the expenditure of the county's ARPA funds. There is a lot of work that is happening with that money, both county-level projects and elsewhere as well. It'll be really interesting, I think, to see how those take shape over the next couple of years. And we invested in the county's businesses and workers through additional grant programs, entrepreneurial classes with the small business development. I don't know. The SBPC, releasing revised CPAC guidelines that apply to multifamily buildings now. That will be interesting to see what gets built and renovated with those monies. Continuing workforce training and the Careers of Tomorrow Job Fair, Career Fair for almost 1,000 students this past fall. In 2023, we will, we will keep at it, improving transportation infrastructure, through progress with the King of Prussia Rail Project and getting final design for some of the segments of the Ridge Pike Improvement Project, continuing the SRPRA partnership, and also our partnership with the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board to promote our assets, improving coordination with municipalities and business owners to promote more business creation and promoting our economic and workforce development opportunities. We also do take a look each year at our breath and preservation map to look at where development is taking place. The vast majority of our new development is taking place in our designated growth areas. I think last year, can't see from this angle. What do you want, Chris? Almost all of it. 91% of our housing construction took place in our growth areas. It's a little bit less, I think, than what we saw happen in 2020, but we are mostly meeting our goals here. Non-residential construction even better. I think it was 99, 98% of our non-residential development is taking place in our designated growth areas. And these are some minor updates to our, our transportation maps in the comprehensive plan, mostly just to show that the vast majority of these projects are moving forward. These were all of the things that we identified as priority projects, programs, just means that they are projects that had funding attached to them at the time of our plan. And the blue and pink colors mean that they are either underway with this. underway with designer engineering or are are being constructed. So um, we really only have a handful of projects left that didn't move forward yet. And the vision projects are are projects that we thought were important but didn't have funding attached to them. And even some of those have moved ahead as well. So we are making progress with the the things that we felt were uh, important projects for the county to support and and move forward. A document is posted online for those of you who uh, are at home and uh, don't have access to uh, my excellent uh, printing capabilities, but um, I am happy to entertain any questions about uh, this document.
Any questions for Anne, John or Jonathan?
Uh, no question, Steve. Just a, a thank you. A lot of information, very informative. Well done. Thank you.
I agree, Anne. Thanks a lot.
The uh, I'm gonna turn questions from board members in the room.
I just wanna thank, I wanna thank Anne for her presentation, but I wanna thank her for just carrying a heavy workload in the past months and years. And we recognize it and we're very appreciative of that. This is a lot of work being done, a lot of work forecasted, hopefully will be done. Capacity, I think, we'll discuss later on. Um, but I saw in several of your bullet points or your checks, the importance of messaging around the work that we do. I think the county remains um, uh, an unknown asset to many of the citizens of this, of this region. We do fabulous work and I just wholeheartedly wish that we could let people know a little bit more actively how their, their county dollars, their taxes are used, but how we bring money in from um, other resources, whether they be state or federal. Because Montgomery County is a wonderful place to live, work and play. And that's, a lot of that has to do with county government and it has to do with our agency specifically, so. Bravo, Anne, and thank you.
Uh, thank you. It's not just me.
I didn't mean to say it was just you.
Yeah.
You know, your, your, your team and the general team, but this is, the work is wonderful. And if you, if you don't have the um, the privilege of hearing about it or somehow bump into it, because a lot of times it doesn't come directly to you. It's like what um, John Ernst said about hearing it from Scott at the consortium. I mean, sometimes the managers don't even know what the resource is available. And sometimes it passes through their vision, but they have so many other priorities that they're not able to focus enough to take advantage. So these are, the, the communication both ways to me is very important. And although we do, we try to do a really good job, in some cases we do, I always think we can do more around that.
Any other comments?
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree with, with Dolce. Uh, about this, um, I mean, it's beautiful. When I drive through Montgomery County, it's just, it's amazing all the things that are here. Now, we have all the way from rural to city to well, I am afraid that there is not enough narrative to the constituents, to the citizens, to the people who live here to really know and to really understand everything what has been happening, all the possibilities. And I don't know if that is a situation of uh, communication, if that is a situation in what way we can actually eh, tell the narrative different, because the narrative that overshadows sometimes is, for example, the big eh, eh, construction that we have here on the side, no? And people is asking, oh, all that money is going there, no? And they don't know that there are many other resources that are going to many other places. Uh, in the park, I bike constantly there. I see those.
I think stop for the story walk.
For the story walk. I haven't, I haven't seen that the, the last year. And every time when I am biking, I am tempted to stop to, 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 one of those, no? But I think, or sometimes I just jump down on the, on the bike and do it, but and I take the kids of Secate. We constantly go to the park with cameras to enjoy. Eh, eh, we go to the different reserve areas with the photography class or with the filmmaking class. But those kids need to be involved with an organization like Secate in order to enjoy. But those who are not, many times, you have no idea. They, they don't, that, that, that idea, no? Therefore, I don't know what therefore we can do in order to to make it more busy for generally the constituents to say, here is this place that you can go where you can improve your health, where you can improve this, where you can have this time free, where you can actually go and visit. Eh, because this is good. This is good. And I, and I appreciate very much this report. Very well done and good job. And thank you to all the team.
Yeah, so, Joe.
Echo everything.
So, we're talking about the communication. I just, a question. So, first I would say, be careful what you ask for, because you, you know, from the planning commission side, we're always struggling with where we are with staff and workload and we can't get stuff done. It's just a lot of effort by a lot of people. You know, advertising it and putting it out there more and more, just it creates more interest in getting more services from the planning commission. So I think that's balance the that with being able to staff where, where you are now and where you were gonna be in the future. As far as uh, you know, I think there's always been efforts, but the efforts seem to never um, materialize or continue is being able to advertise what is happening in the county and what the assets are in the county. I know there's been efforts in the past. Um, just, I think just something that seems to ebb and flow, um, never consistent or constant, um, means of getting information out there. Um, along the lines of what Obed was talking about, some of the accomplishments that are happening, but not all planning commission accomplishments there.
That was what I was gonna say. I think a lot of Obed's comments are bigger than just the planning committee. The county communicate.
Right. It's, I'm not saying that it's our, that it's our responsibility, and I don't want, I don't want Scott's shoulders to go down like this, since I'm saying it. But it's just something that we can push for, advocate for and and show what has been done. And the, the possibilities, you know, the possibilities of bringing more people into the communication. I really like what Obed said about narratives, you know? The stories, you know, making things concrete to people, just not phrases, you know? How something benefited people, you know, the stories of the benefit are just very powerful.
But to what means? What are we, what, what are we looking for the county to advertise? What's the end result? Is it to inform current taxpayers or is it in current residents or is it to inform outside businesses or outside residents or um, to move or move or be in coming Montgomery County?
I think it's all the things, Stephen. Uh, I mean, we have a comprehensive plan. We want those things done. Uh, the work that we do is advancing that. People have to understand, no, people don't have to. It, I, it's to our benefit that people understand that because we get those policies pushed forward if people understand.
And, and also the, some of those narratives eh, has to appeal to the different eh, eh, interest and moments of life or the people who lives in Montgomery County, for example. Eh, we know that there is business increasing or there is business moving. The narrative has to be, this is a good place to make business. These are the communities that are making business. These are the businesses that are having opening from a small to big, no? We know that, for example, eh, we want to be concerned for the well-being, no? For a healthy lifestyle. No? Then this is the places where actually is happening this. This is a place where you can go. This is a place where your family can have this time with nature, et cetera, no? I mean, there are many different narratives that appeal to the, uh, to the Monaco twenty-fourty that we can actually nail in all, in all these goals, no? With concrete stories, with concrete narratives, with concrete examples.
I was just gonna say, uh, awareness um, is kind of where I start with it. People don't know about it, no matter what the, the message or the um, way we frame it, um, the first half to know it exists. And uh, there's one item and it's, again, it's many fronts to this, but there is one item I do have my track to support as a new initiative to en- enhance that uh, with their, with their monthly updates. But um, I agree. And it, it is so, it's, it's it's county-wide. It is all these projects, all these things, you know, maybe a park, so this one maybe. And it does have to have, kind of have to come from top down and we have to be a big part of it. We always hear, we've heard from the past, I heard from, direct from commissioner's mouth, how um, the most their constituents know about the county, they get, they hear through the planning commission. Um, cause we're out there, uh, you know, maybe on, you know, at their meetings or doing, we work there. Um, and so we do have that benefit and we, we need, we wanna capitalize on it as much as we have. While you have attention to promote the county and even the things that we're not doing, but supporting.
Right, but the planning commission is not a population's organization.
No, we have one person uh, with who does a lot, um, with the, and, and, and the two people actually, but um, yeah.
The planning commission does stuff, does a lot of work that could be, could be exploited by somebody who's focusing on power relations. Including some of the, including a lot of other things that the county does. Split, um, outside of what.
There is a new branding initiative that I think includes a component, but it's not just like our communication, which I think is stronger now than it has been in the last ten years, but uh, we're still getting better. Um, but the branding effort of consultants coming in, that's throughout this year to make us a more publicly flashy um, entity as a whole.
But it's really, you know, we're, I think because we're in so many communities, our, our planners are in so many communities, we are emissaries. We are ambassadors. Um, I remember starting many, many years ago and used to say at the time, nobody knew that at that point, Montgomery County was number one in the state in manufacturing. Now, that was a lot of function. Well, we can tap the, the miles of trails we have. I mean, the, the number of parks we have, there, there's just a set of things that could be talking points, that could be your, you know, your elevator speech that we, that really, these are real. I mean, we have to just clarify them and continue to bring them to communities that I want. And it's wonderful that Secate does the things they do with the youth, but when you go to most kids in the county, they don't know what a township is or a county is. They don't know what the county does. They don't know why they should vote for a county commissioner. They don't know who the county, you know, they don't understand government enough to, and I'm not blaming them, but those are the things that it's not our number one responsibility, Stephen, but we have the ability to do it in a way as individuals, as planners, that most county family doesn't have.
So you, you just, you sparked one takeaway. I'm gonna get out of this. I thank you for it. And that's with the comprehensive planning effort coming up for twenty fifty and there's, there's public outreach that's already started. It's not just outreach to get feedback. We can incorporate the information, the benefits, the, you know, the right now we're working on existing conditions and kind of background documents. We, we need to have that information front and center because if we're asking feedback, we wanna make sure they know, you know, they're not commenting things that if we may already be doing and they just not be aware of, so. And this writing notes as I talk, we need, we need to include that in our list of fifty things to make sure we address throughout this on plan process, but that's, that may be more important than I think we had upfront, so.
Yeah. I would bring it close to this because we gotta keep moving on, but I somewhat disagree with some of that. I think that the planning commission's purview should be where we have been, which is, you know, working with communities and working on the overall outlook of the county and producing good products and producing good projects. And the work that we continue to do, I think the, um, the marketing end of this uh, should be picked up by the county commissioner level or the higher, you know, the overall county. Uh, I think there's a lot to tell in Montgomery County and I think it should be a more vigorous uh, effort on that level than just the planning mission level. Continue to uh, promote the things that the planning commission does specifically to its efforts, but not the overall county. Um, that's just a, that's a, I think that's a burden. The county planning commission doesn't have to do it or the budget. Anyhow, is there any other comments, board members? Hey, Bob?
I just muted him, I'm sorry.
You got muted, Bob.
Sorry.
I think what, what Dolphy um, is, is her comments, you know, speak volumes. I think everybody understands the, the, the effort that the planning commission members, not, not us on the board, but the actual people that do the work. You know, how they turn out such a good product and, and you know, how everybody loves it, but um, I, I remember years ago, the planning commission had like an open house and they brought people in from the community just to see what the planning commission was about. Now, you know, the last thing we need is, is another night meeting, but I mean, I think that worked out pretty good. Scott, were you here then, uh, when they had?
I recall, yeah, we, we, we had a lot of, a lot of partners came in. I don't know, we got a lot of community members, but we, it was uh, one of our colleagues and partners.
Consultants, consultants coming.
And, and does, does the planning commission uh, members, do they go out to like the, for instance, Worcester Day? Do they go out and set up a table at Worcester Day or you know, Whipping Township, things like that? I, I, I know that it's, it's unfair to ask them to do it on, on a Saturday or something like that, but maybe we could you know, give them comp time or something to, to uh, you know, to attend that. Not, not for days on end, but I think it's just a, a short, you know, four hour, you know, Whipping Township Day.
I think that's been done when there's planning efforts within those communities that are
Right.
that are uh, relevant to getting community in uh, input. Um, I think the planning commission members have gone out to those events.
County's communication staff does go out to have a county-themed table with county-level resources. Uh, I think that our participation is mostly limited to when we have something we're looking for feedback on. That is you know, that's where we get all of those nice pictures of us with our, you know, pictures and pushpins and sticky dots and what have you.
Scott's love the dots.
Well, let me move on to the annual summary report.
Oh, before you do that, is there any comments or questions from staff or um, public on the implementation report? Hey Bob, you wanna mute yourself, please?
I'm sorry, Steve.
I see none. Come on, still you're, still got the podium.
Alright, annual summary. Um, I have never presented this report before. Uh, so, um,
Just talk fast.
I'm good at that, but um, I, I do wanna say before I begin, uh, big thanks to Steve Zabinski, who said he is um, hanging out on Zoom, watching me fumble my way through the morning. Um, he is the one who um, handles all of the numbers for the P. Uh, somehow masterfully oversees the two forty-seven submission database and pulls all of the numbers out from it to make all of the charts and graphs for this report. So um, I get to stand up here and talk about it, but he is the one that did a lot of the work. So, thank you, Steve. Uh, alright, the twenty twenty-two annual summary. In twenty twenty-two, we had a slight decrease in our um, annual submissions to the county. The dark blue portion of the graph is our total submissions that came to four hundred thirty-six and the new proposals was slightly down to one hundred seventy-seven proposals. Um, but it's not, I mean, it's, it's pretty much in line with what we've seen prior to twenty twenty-one. Uh, twenty twenty-one was just, I guess, a banner year for us. In twenty twenty-two, these are the submissions by municipality. You can see a, a lot of submissions uh, here along and outward along four twenty-two corridor. We continue to see uh, submissions, you know, based on highway access and where there's open land. Uh, proposed acreage for development. In twenty twenty-two, we had one thou, one hundred thirty-four acres proposed for development. Uh, certainly down from um, ten years ago, but a, a slow upward creep, I guess, from twenty twenty. Um, you can't develop on new land forever, but um, but there's still definitely development taking place.
You say proposed acreage, is that undeveloped acreage?
Um,
Or is it a combination of undeveloped?
I believe it is a combination.
Um, yes, it's a, yeah, we separate that later, but yeah.
Acreage by type by far, uh. My, my pointer is all about it's like residential by far is the, the most acres that we're seeing proposed for development. Uh, industrial though, that's the uh twenty two percent wedge on the left. Uh, that also. Um, you'll see later on in this presentation, we have a lot of proposals for uh warehouses and other similar industrial space. So that's why that, that wedge is so big.
At twenty two percent, how many projects is that?
I don't know.
So it's based on acreage, acreage and these distribution centers eat up a lot of acreage, so it could be. One or two projects as opposed to where the residential could be, you know.
Office, the office twelve percent, um, the office. Uh, the square footage, I think, is higher last year than we've seen in a decade, but it's really fueled by one proposal in Upper Marion, for example, but. Um, industrial proposals, I believe, made up the majority of what we saw last year. Um, at least in terms of the largest proposals, but uh I'll get to that in a minute. In terms of residential development, the number of residential units proposed last year was down. Um, twenty twenty one was really a, a banner year for residential units being proposed. We had three thousand six hundred forty four units proposed last year. Um, that is, I guess, fairly consistent with the average that we've seen over the last ten weeks. Hi, um, again, multifamily development is the, I am no good with this pointer, is the. Is the type of development we're seeing the most of, less than we saw in twenty twenty one in terms of number of units. Uh, but still the, the largest percentage of new units received proposed. I will note, though, it's hard to tell because. Colors are kind of similar, but single family detached homes, the thing we talked about with seeing the least of is slowly. Increasing in terms of the number of units received. We had. Um, forty three percent increase in the number of detached units we saw proposed last year and twenty twenty one was an increase over twenty twenty. So by no means am I indicating that the trend of multifamily development is going away, but it was interesting to note that detached homes were increasing somewhat. Largest residential proposals, uh, here are the top ten on our map of the county. Um, Shannon Dell's third phase with five hundred units proposed is the largest of the proposals we saw last year. Uh, the ones with the asterisk on them are age restricted, so the other age restricted. Development that we saw in this top ten list is in upper hand over the residences at upper hand, which is um here, number nine. Uh, other, other developments really scattered around the county and some of them being infill proposals and some of them. Uh, being grand new greenfield development.
Do you have a sense of how many of those are actually going into construction?
Uh, no, I don't. Um, Kennedy Kenrick, I can tell you that is def, that has been approved and is moving ahead. That's number four in Norristown. That's the redevelopment of the former uh Catholic high school up the road from here. Um, that's. And I think that's going to be a big deal for Norristown, uh, not taking any thunder away from the redevelopment of the former state hospital site. But um, that's gonna, I think, be a nice looking development when it's done.
That has, that has multifamily, single and town, doesn't it have town, three, I think?
Attached and multifamily. Um, but a lot of new units, a lot, market rate units for Norris.
Yeah. And you might be getting to this, are these, any of these, is there any figures on any of them being affordable else?
Um. Not that I know of. Um, the developer of Kennedy Kenrick does specialize in building. Market rate homes that are more affordable than others, I guess. Um, that's kind of her, her specialty. Uh, everything else that's here, I believe. That's true, the market rate.
The one eleven presidential does uh have an inclusionary uh developer provided aspect. I think there's fifteen percent or. Hundred percent affordable units.
Whoa.
Lower Marion. To get back to your other question, uh, there is a statistic in here, thirty seven percent of the acreage in total is on existing developed land where there's a structure. Of that thousand or so acres.
Thirty seven percent is part of a redevelopment.
Yeah, some of it may still be infill, but if it's a cleared lot undeveloped, it does, it's not part of that thirty seven percent.
Uh, by municipality, we uh are seeing uh strong development numbers in, well, you know, those, those large, ten largest. Proposals are, you know, indicative of the, the darkest blue colors here, but we are seeing. Um, you know, a lot of development still being proposed up here in New Hanover and Douglas, uh, Limerick as well, uh, so, you know. Places with good access to four twenty two are, are still developing. Uh, Warsester's multifamily development uh is probably the most developmented seen there in, in some time. Um. Uh, and then interesting as well are the places that are not seeing any new residential development. That's an, an interesting contrast here.
Good question.
Yeah.
When does it get on the list? You say proposed residential, when it actually goes to the land development?
No, when we see it for review here at the county for the first time. And as a, as a land development, not as a sketch plan, but as a proposed.
And is that the two fifty seven review process or do you see it before that?
We see it as part of the two forty seven review process, so we do see a lot of things. Initially as proposed sketch plans, and I don't think that we count it as a review. Scott's saying no. Uh, we don't count it towards these numbers until it is being submitted for official review.
Oh, very land.
Yeah.
Yeah, so in a sense, land development or subdivision is when it comes to a two forty seven obligations we can. And that's when it gets on.
That's when, yes, when it is being submitted as, at, at the very least, a preliminary land development is when we start counting it towards these numbers.
Good, great, thank you.
Look at that Norristown one.
Yeah, that's.
It's entirely the Kennedy Kenrick development that is, you know, making it so doggone. And I mean, there have been other residential proposals that I've seen mentioned in the news, but I'm not sure that we have reviewed any of them officially yet.
Yeah. I'm sorry, because I know we, there was a proposal for eight units in Shelton Hamper. I think that may have started in twenty twenty one. It's towards the end of twenty twenty one.
Uh, moving on to non-residential. Uh, so you can see here that the, the numbers for non-residential development are going way up uh here. Uh, five point two million square feet of non-residential development were proposed in twenty twenty two. Um, this on its way up uh over the last ten years. Uh, and by far, um, office number, as I was mentioning. Is way higher than it's been in a long time, uh, as I mentioned in the report. Um, despite all of the uh trends you see reported on people who want to work from home. Uh, but this office number is really fueled by one proposal uh for the. So Smith Klein facility in Upper Marion Township. Um, they're doing a lot of, I guess, R and D construction on their.
Sorry, who did you say it was?
Blackson, Blackson. The, the other big number that you're seeing here is for industrial development. Um. So you can see here with our largest non-res- residential proposals, uh, that. Number one spot belongs to that one office development I was mentioning, but. Uh, you can see the vast majority of what's on the list are for industrial development. Projects, I think it's seven of the top ten, um. Uh, for, you know, warehouse and flex space and other similar kinds of projects. In terms of square footage by municipality, um. Upper Marion is at the top of the list, um. But we're seeing strong development in places like Upper Hanover, for example, where. I don't know if I would have expected that five or ten years ago, but because of its. Proximity to the Quaker Town interchange, we are seeing a lot of interest in places like. And last but not least, zoning activity. We reviewed, oh, I didn't put the number on here, I believe it is one hundred six. Zoning amendments or map amendments in twenty twenty two. That's a little bit. Down from twenty twenty one. Uh, but um, people are still out there taking advantage of the community planning assistance. And working on uh tweaking their, their zoning to, to be a, a better fit going forward.
In a sense of how many of those zoning amendments are related to any model ordinances planning commission is putting together?
No, no. I do not know that all these questions, Stephen. Um.
See, Eric's got the info, but I don't, I think he's got the same one as well, I have.
I think there are a fair amount of them that are municipal driven. Um, a lot of them. We're doing comprehensive zoning rewrites, and so we always look at our models for those. Uh, but I think last year New Hanover adopted a village mixed use, which was entirely based on our village mixed use model. Uh, so if we're working on them, we always start with the models, so they're at least um integrated in some degree.
The models also help with the letters. They give us something to point to, to say, you know, if we don't think something is being done right or could be better in a, in a proposal. We are having those available, saying, you know, look at our, you know, example here, you might want to do this and this is very helpful. Okay, whether that equates to action, that's.
Right. Uh, I am going to skip my wordy conclusion. Um, too wordy for this, for this slide, but um. You know, we saw a decrease in residential units proposed, but just lately, uh, twenty twenty one was really truly a, a big year for. Um, residential development proposals. Uh, we saw major multifamily projects being proposed in Lower Marion, Lower Providence and Limerick, uh, near our employment centers and transportation resources. A big, big year for non-residential square footage, um. And industrial, the word is industrial today, so um. I will leave that as my conclusion, and if anyone has any questions, I am happy to answer Scott's.
And I'm gonna, I'm just gonna tack on to that, still post that, uh, you know, here we, it's February. Eight, um, we're off to a very slow start for twenty twenty three, uh, not just us, I think the general economy everywhere. Uh, what we've seen um come through uh so far has been extremely minimal, um, surprisingly even the level it is and. I'm closest to Lower Marion and I, you know, that they've had, have large numbers, as you saw. They're pretty bone dry. It's all, there's still pipeline activity, lots of pipeline activity. Uh, but new projects, uh, whether it be because of financing and changes in interest rates or just the backlog, uh, has really slowed up. So I think that's important to, uh, move forward.
Catch your breath.
Maybe. Stand up here next year.
We hope that it's not, you know. Stifling, you know, good, good development.
Well, all this industrial, I mean, we keep talking about manufacturing in Montgomery County, no one realizes.
Well, is it manufacturing?
Industrial.
Mostly, mostly. There's still jobs, but not necessarily manufacturing.
I'm sorry, hold on, sorry. The industrial is being built. Do we have a sense of how much of that is manufacturing? How much of that is warehousing or distribution centers?
Um. I don't know. I don't know what the breakdown is. Uh, of the things that I drive past, they look like warehousing to me, but. Um, I don't go knocking.
Are mostly industrial and I can't.
I mean, uh.
Industrial is near like highways. I guess I would be the same with manufacturing, forget it's stupid, that's a pointless question, so.
I'm just looking for jobs. There's well-paying jobs.
Right. But manufacturing has a, has longer tentacles in job production than warehouse.
Oh, sure.
Distribution centers, so.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm.
See, anecdotally, when we, we see this, this come in and it's, a couple of us have an interest in seeing how much is going on with, with. Like the spec, the speculative stuff that some people are doing, I think we've seen a lot of the warehouse, warehouse distribution. And, and we've always said that, I mean, a lot of it in Limerick was that, a lot of it up in Upper Hanover was that, but, and it's close enough to some sort of. Um, bigger road that that, that's why they could do it, but um, we've been talking about whether or not, really whether that's going to get built or not. But, yeah, but I would say that it, it just anecdotally, we didn't do any, we didn't really compare and add them up, but if I were to say, just having seen it over the past year. A lot of it was warehouse man, warehouse.
I mean, this picture here, uh, fuzzy as it may be, because I was standing across the street. Uh, three huge warehouses in Culpso with more being built around the corner. Um.
And it's the connector that's, that's driving.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, with the easy access to, to the northeast extension, that's a lot of what we're seeing proposed here, Franconia, um. Or Southford, I don't need any place that's within.
Look, and damage, the pandemic changed. The way people, you know, interact with commerce and most people are getting stuff delivered to their house in one way, shape or form, whether it's. Amazon, Walmart, Target, whatever the hell it is, you know, so distribution centers are popping up like crazy. Um. So, I mean, that's not surprising, you know, just.
But these don't have, when I went past, I looked to see who was coming in there and they say contact. They're, they're not saying.
No, no, there's no, yeah.
Well, but most of the, most of the distribution centers. I mean, Amazon, this is a bit different, but most of these distribution centers are like. You know, third parties that are leasing out and actually operating under the specifications of these companies, of these larger retail companies. To provide the distribution processing for them.
And Amazon snapped up that vacant Walmart space on Germantown Pike, and I don't even think it's being used yet. It's empty, but. I'm sure they prefer that they own it than somebody else owning it.
Sure. Yeah, anyhow. Interesting change of events, so. Any other questions for Ann? Well, not important.
I was in the same venue, not to, to understand more. What kind of industry is though?
Right.
Because we want to know. What to expect ahead of me. Now, because it's a large portion. It will create a economical, perhaps dependence, some points. And we would like to know where it's going, you know, where it's going, where it's heading on. I, I wonder if it's possible to have a copy of this resolution?
Uh, I can give you a copy of the report. That I managed to get read out of the printer.
I find it very in, 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 important, interesting, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, the, the industry was also my question.
Yeah.
Because it's a big portion. It's the second after the residential. Except, that right, yeah.
Um, Nicole, Jill, Jonathan, John, Bob, anybody? Any staff or residents?
Thanks, Ann. Thank you.
Steve, just, just a quick comment. We, you know, we're involved with the Amazon down there on Rich Pike. And uh, they were going to be opening up the one in East Norton, and then they decided not to, uh, it's a big empty shell right now. It's not, not filled. There's no, uh. Racks for storage or anything else because uh they believe that they've over, overbuilt and they're, they're pulling back. I mean, they're up in the valley, they're pulling back. Lehigh Valley, things like that, so. Uh, that's just a, just a little flavor. We've been dealing with them for over a year now. And we kind of keep our ear to the ground, so I think the, I think the, the Rich Pike one for access to the Blue Root is far superior than. The one in East Norton Township.
Alright, thanks, Bob. Okay, move on to our next agenda, which is the Hazard Mitigation Plan and Morning, Drew.
Good morning. Morning, everyone. Uh, we are at nearing the end of this. Process, I say with a big smile, and we are in the uh public comment period. Prior to submitting this to FEMA and HEMA, but I wanted to just, again, familiarize you all with. The plan and the process, so I have a, a brief presentation here. Our public comment period is, is running now, it's running through February seventeenth.
Oops, oops. Good.
Uh, so we are required to have a plan and maintain that plan with five-year updates. Our original plan in two thousand and seven, we've had two updates, this is our third. Uh, and a couple of things to note. One is that the content, the format is prescribed by FEMA. Everybody has to do things the same way, so that if I go to Huntington. County or Forest County or Montgomery County, I can look at chapter four and I know exactly what it's going to have. Um, that's good for the folks that work in. Um that's good for the folks that work in emergency operations as they travel. Around the state. The other thing, probably a little more important, is having a plan and having the municipalities adopt the plan. Makes us all eligible for funding through FEMA, whether it's through their grant program or whether it's a disaster-related. Uh pool of funding. If we have an adopted plan, then we are eligible. So we have a planning team. Uh there's five of us working on the writing. Four of us from Montgomery County Planning Commission and Joanna Hilek from the Department of Public Safety. And through her, she pulled in the the uh EOC folks. Uh and then we had an advisory committee of uh county departments. Uh and municipalities and major employers uh in operating in the county. There are, I'll get the number wrong, I'm sure, twenty six hazards that we uh are assessing, and I just grouped them. Uh just so you get an idea of the types of things we cover. Some of these occur frequently, almost annually. Some we hope never occur, but we want to be prepared for them. Uh and we are able to add. Uh new hazards if uh we feel it's it's warranted, so the number's up from five years ago. We added uh three new uh hazards, which I'll get to in a moment. And so the content, as I said, is prescribed by FEMA. First chapter is the just the background. We have all the information about the county and also where we get our data, which is important in case we need to refresh. The planning process, uh we describe it to FEMA. They are interested in certain things, in particular, they're interested in public and stakeholder participation. They want to know that people have had a chance to participate. And so we we upped the public outreach effort from our last time, and and I I think there's still room for improvement, but we have uh. Increased our effort to to get this out in front of the public. The next few chapters. Are kind of the meat of the plan, where we assess the risks associated with the various hazards that you just saw previously. And I'll go through that in a little bit. We also want to look at uh our the county's vulnerability to the various hazards. Uh not just now, but in the future, as development occurs, we want to assess that vulnerability. We also look at the capability, and by that I mean what ordinances are in place, what building uh codes are in place, are they up to date? Is there a con- a continuity of operations plan? Uh those type of of documents, policies, and programs at the municipal level and at the county level. Also, it's the financial capability. Uh it was severely taxed this uh this year with Hurricane Ida certainly. But we want to sort of assess that, and then there's, we want to see, well, who's doing education and outreach? Because that's that's an important part of this as well. All of that is wrapped into the mitigation strategy, which I'll go into more detail in a second. So we had this process, uh and I'm not going to go through all of this, but it's interesting to note how the ranking occurs. You can see down here the RF value, the risk factor value, and how we assigned each of the hazards a risk factor. The five aspects there, probability, impact, extent, warning time and duration, they're weighted. And we asked the advisory committee to go through this exercise and prioritize high, medium, low eventually, the various hazards. Just to give you an idea what's involved there, probability has to do with the likelihood of the event occurring in any given year. Running from unlikely to highly likely. Impact. Has to do with injuries or damage to property or or death. It can be minor. It can be catastrophic. Spatial extent, how large of an area is affected by the hazard event? You can have a building collapse in a borough, and that affects a few blocks around maybe, or you can have one of our winter snowstorms that comes through and shuts down. The entire region for a day or two while everybody digs out, so the extent is is important to note. How much warning time we have, um sometimes there's virtually none, the fire that was over in Bridgeport a decade or so ago. You know, nobody knew that was going to happen, but if there's a hurricane. Everyone's tracking it. Everyone's getting online every day and saying, where is it now? And it starts coming up the coast. We have some warning time, so that's that's a factor that we look at. And then how long does the hazard event itself usually last? You know, we we look at Ida and the impacts of Ida are, we're still cleaning up. People are still in hotels and so on, but that's not the hazard event. How long did the weather, in this case, how long did that last? And then we ranked everything, and this year was kind of interesting, or this update is kind of interesting. Flooding has always been our number one hazard, and this year it was beaten out by a few percentage uh points. Uh by the pandemic, and I think a lot of that has to do with just the awareness. It's in the papers all the time. You hear it all the time, social media all the time. Your friends are getting sick, you're getting sick. The pin.
Um so what do these numbers represent?
The numbers represent the rankings um on a scale of one to one, one to one to five.
How's the ranking?
Well, that's what we just went, we just went through with this, with that formula. Where's the formula?
Risk.
Yeah, down here, there is fact, the risk factor. So we multiply everything out. And it is subjective, you know, depending on the group and depending on, you know, what's in the news and what what people are aware of. But I think it's 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 a worthwhile exercise, because the high priority hazards, as you can see there, are the ones that have a a very strong impact on us. The the low impact were the low-ranking ones. You know, we do see these hazards occur. I mean, Jenkentown had an earthquake, what was that, twenty two years ago or something? Uh, you know, it. The landslide over on Bella Gomingo Road, that closed down Bella Gomingo Road and caused a lot of people a lot of headaches on their commute. But that doesn't happen that often, but we do have, you know, extreme temperature events, winter storms. And the so it just gives it us an idea of the um. The priority or the the ranking of of the various hazards.
Your back one slide.
Sure.
Is that the formula up top?
That is the formula up top. So.
I'm sorry, Drew, I missed. Is is this whole system, this matrix, all the, is that ours or is that a national?
This is prescribed by FEMA, and and we we worked through the, we worked through the process with our advisor.
We just plug in our numbers.
Right, okay, and it's interesting. Can I zoom ahead for a second? Sure.
I'm sorry, now.
Are you checking my math or?
Well, I'm going into the actual formula now, because now I'm interested in that part.
There was, there's the formula there.
How uh subjective it might be.
It it it's it's not.
Like the probability part of it, how subjective is that?
Well, again, probability, that's very subjective. Um you know, we can, we can, some things we can measure, and we say, okay, in the last thirty years now, how often has. You know, significant flooding from storms occurring.
And impact also, I mean, those those two together are sixty percent of the formula.
Right, and we have, we do have in- information, you know, the health department was was very helpful with us with looking at opioid. Uh overdoses and so on, so we do have some data, but a lot of it is is still uh somewhat subjective.
Right. Now I'm all about the formula, true, so.
Well, you're on the advisory committee in five years. Uh you can work through the exercise yourself. This, I think, was kind of interesting too, because we compared last. Plan, two thousand and seventeen plan results of the ranking to uh the current ranking, and then we also compared it to Pennsylvania's statewide hazard mitigation plan, which they completed in two thousand and nineteen. And, you know, some things are much more uh. Ranked much more higher than they were previously, other things not so much. Um. And 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 again, you can look and you can sort of say, well, okay, there was, there was a fair amount of of public. Uh outcry about certain pipelines a few years ago, so that may have uh influenced the results there. Um there's been a lot of um this the single uh activity over in Plymouth Township along Chemical Road. You know, that that somebody experiences that, they remember it, and therefore they might rank it a little more higher, so it is subjective, but it's it's interesting to see how things. Increase and decrease in there.
And look at those things that were not even on our radar screen.
Right, I mean, that's interesting. The the two thousand and seventeen plan, the pandemic section, I think, was three paragraphs long. So, you know, nobody, nobody knew. So, yeah, it's it's interesting to see things that come and go, and and we did add three new hazards to the to the uh two thousand and twenty two plan. Invasive species, gun violence, and opioids. Very different hazards, but but very uh. Each one in its own way having an impact. Invasive species. You know, is having an impact on agriculture and farming operations as the spotted lanternfly moves across uh the area. Also, uh municipalities have been removing ash trees from their open space to avoid liability issues. As the Emerald Ash Borer kills those trees, and and that's expensive. I mean, I, if you drive. On uh yeah, through uh Upper Marion, there's there's huge areas where they've just taken down all the trees. Which is very expensive. Gun violence and opioids, both on the rise to the point where we felt it was it was important to include them in this uh plan update. Uh and the Sheriff's Department, and as I mentioned, the Health Department, helped us gather a lot of the information on on those hazards. Uh and as I mentioned, we've expanded the pandemic section. And all of that information gets put together into what we call the mitigation strategy. Uh in a moment, I'll go over the what FEMA says about the goals and objectives uh and. How we incorporate that into the plan, but it's just giving you, all the preceding slides give you an idea of how we got to, how we got to here. Now FEMA says goals are general, they're broad, they're high-level. They're in a sense, they're aspirational, and since the first plan, we've had these four goals. We evaluate them every five years. We say, are they still pertinent? Do we want to add any more goals? But these are broad, overarching. Goals with uh the most specific one is goal number four, because flooding is such a prevalent and uh persistent. Issue in Montgomery County, there's a specific goal related to flooding, but the others, you can see, you know, develop a better understanding of the disasters. Uh raise public awareness of the hazards and what they can do to minimize their risks. Reduce the risk of loss of life, economic impacts and so on. They're very broad. Underneath those goals are objectives that outline strategies to achieve those goals, and then. Underneath the objectives are specific actions, projects perhaps listed. Uh and those are very important, because those are the ones that specifically can be applied for for funding. So, for example, uh this chart in the plan is is pages long, but I just took a couple screen captures to. Give you an idea. We have goal number one, develop a better understanding of the potential disasters that could occur in the county, and then we have objective one A. There's objective one B and one C also, but this is just to give you an idea. Ensure that all key county and municipal officials and the public are aware of hazard mitigation. When we did these surveys, we found that twenty percent of the respondents weren't aware. Of the term hazard mitigation. They weren't aware that we have a hazard mitigation plan, so that says there's a need for more more outreach. The actual actions, the projects are training. There's an annual training that the the Emergency Operations Center and the Fire Training Academy uh work on every year. Uh and then we make the plan itself available publicly. It's available, of course, the EOC has copies, but and it's online, but we try to promote it in our libraries and to the municipalities and so on. Goal number two, same format. We're looking to ensure that the public understands the potential hazards and aware with what they can do to minimize their risks. And that has to do with getting things out on the internet, social media, getting things, you know, pamphlets at municipal buildings, libraries for the folks that aren't online. And then just something as simple as making sure that the Public Safety Department knows where all of the schools, hospitals, nursing homes, daycare centers has. You know, their their accurate addresses, in case a hazard uh an event occurs that we have to address. You know, maybe evacuating, you know, the nursing home uh in an area or so on. Looking to reduce the risk of loss of life uh and economic costs of of these hazards, goal number three. This is where we might get more involved. When I keep saying we, I don't necessarily mean the planning commission, I I mean the county, the EOC. But in this case, we do have a role, working with municipalities, make sure they have the most up-to-date building codes. Uh make make them aware of various planning efforts that they can institute uh to help minimize uh the the risk. And then goal number four, uh oh, sorry, my goal number four should read flooding. That's the wrong goal. Uh that's the previous goal. Uh reduce the number of structures subjected to floodplain is the objective. Uh in this case, we can be looking to acquire homes where the homeowner is willing to sell. Oh, and then we remove the home from the property and and maintain the property as as open space, and the municipality is directly involved in those actions. Uh there is also elevation and floodproofing, and you might have noticed several homes in the Montclair area, several homes along Paulings Road. Uh have been elevated since Ida, and so if the person's not willing to sell, this is an option uh for them. An idea of the types of projects that that uh came out of the two thousand and seventeen plan, and there are similar ones in the the two thousand and twenty two plan. This uh property along East Park Avenue in the Schwenksville area, fifty-one park. Was removed. It was in the floodplain. Purchased and the structure was removed. Uh there was a flood wall constructed uh on a property over in White Marsh Township. I think Bill Hartman's section may have presented information on that uh as as part of the trail that was going through there, this flood wall was constructed. As I mentioned, participation and community engagement is very important to FEMA, and so we had a survey. One survey went to the municipal officials, uh the managers uh and the EOC people, the emergency operations people at the municipality. Another was more general to the public, and that one was translated into Spanish. We distributed it online. We had it paper copies at the municipalities, at local libraries, and so on. Uh we did get about three hundred responses, which, you know, is a very small percentage of the county population. But uh uh among those, we we had some interesting uh results, and there's a presentation that I could make at some time on the actual um. Results of the survey, but what was interesting to me was the additional concerns that people had, you know, listed everything from uh climate change to tree falls. I mean, just when when you ask people. They'll tell you what what's on their mind, what's concerned, what they are concerned with, and and we ranked. Just again, subjectively, we ranked their responses, and here you saw flooding was the number one response among the public. Uh survey responses, but we wanted to show FEMA that we were out there trying to get municipal. Or sorry, public responses, and we took, we had a little postcard, we took two events that people could scan and and get to the survey online, so we were trying to get our response rate up. We are receiving public comments. We'll be receiving them through February seventeenth. Uh just to give you an example of of the types of things, we have specific locations being suggested, like, you know, the hundred, the one hundred block of Mill Street. Should be focused on for buyouts. Uh then there are a lot of general kind of comments, reduce flooding across the county. Thank you. We'll we'll work on that. Um. The specific comments having to do with, you know, during the flood, make sure people understand not to drive into flooded roads and and things like that. Interesting, at least to me, was was to find out that uh there are some concerns about cooperation between municipalities and across county borders. For example, Douglas Township was saying that their equipment, their radio equipment doesn't always work well with Douglas Burks. Uh so just not being able to communicate during a uh some sort of event that crosses county lines, you know, that's a problem, so we have to work on. On that, and then the the need for funding for volunteer fire and ambulance companies, and just staffing for volunteer fire and ambulance companies. Was but uh and I assume that we'll get some more comments this week and and next week. Uh we sent this out uh to our mailing list. It's been posted online upstairs. Uh the the communications people sent this out. Uh it's been sent to the local libraries, municipalities. Um you're welcome to comment also. Uh and uh you can just email me or pick up the phone and call me, uh so we're looking to get as much comment as we can. Um as I said, the ser- here's the survey slide I was looking for earlier. We distribute it to the libraries, and we have a report on the uh. The results. And here we are in our process, very much near the end. Once we get done with this public comment period, we make any final changes to the plan, we submit it to PEMA. PEMA gives it a very quick review just to see that it's complete, and then it moves on to FEMA. FEMA gives it a more thorough review, and there's a little bit of a quirk in the process. When they get to the end of their review and they say, yes, the plan is ready to to be approved. They issue what's called a uh pending adoption letter. They send that to us. We take it to uh. A few municipalities that we've identified in in advance and say, this is ready to go. It's not going to get changed. Please consider adopting it, because FEMA requires one municipality to adopt the plan before they approve it. So we have to get that. Uh that municipality to adopt the plan as quickly as we can after we get FEMA's uh pending adoption notice. After FEMA approves it, yes, then we go after the rest of the municipalities and say, here's the plan, it's approved by FEMA, you need to adopt it for safety reasons, but also to be eligible for funding. for safety reasons, but also to be eligible for funding. And the county will adopt it as well. Not that we're required to, but we will adopt it as well, just because I think it's, you know, setting a good example for the municipalities. So it was kind of a quick run through. Uh, but again, if you have comments, we want your input. Well, the information is there where you can get the plan online. There's a form that you use online to provide comment, or I've gotten some written handwritten letters still from folks. Any way we get comment, we'll accept it. So any comments or questions?
Hey Drew, it's, it's John. I do have a question. You had talked about eligibility for funding. If a municipality does not adopt it, does that mean that the county's eligibility is at jeopardy or the municipality's?
Yeah, just the municipality, John. When, 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 say, uh, say there's a buyout request. It comes from the municipality to FEMA, the county is notified. Uh, but one of the first things FEMA does is look to see if the municipality has adopted the county plan. And if they haven't, that hinders the process.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Drew?
I have a quick question. What's the adoption rate? What's the rate of acceptance by the?
We, every year, we've had every municipality adopt uh, the plan, uh, except for one year, we missed one. They, they just, I don't know if they just never got around to it. We asked them a bunch of times. They never adopted it. But we expect a hundred percent adoption. Again, because it has the support of the emergency operations people and, and locally, and plus it also makes them eligible for funding.
Having gun violence dealt on there. Does it, you, you said you had spoken to emergency management people?
And the, um, the folks on that advisory, the larger advisory committee felt like it had risen to a point where, um, it needs to be in, in the plan. And, and we did some background work. I, I don't have the, the Yeah, the numbers, the numbers are up and, and it's, it, it's disturbing when you look at the breakdown of, of, uh, injuries and, and deaths by, uh, gender, race and age. There are some disturbing trends.
So I think one was missed. I think that walk lead thing on the trails should be looked at as a possibility of being on there.
I mean, no offense, I don't care about Scott. It's the young kids that I'm worried about.
Just the trails, but anywhere, man. I just see these people walking around Norristown with their heads in, in their phone and they're crossing streets and, and
So the probability and the impact is like really high. Take advantage of all the comment period.
It can be possible to have that breakdown to the gun violence, as you mentioned.
Hey Drew.
Yes.
Is, this is a Herculean effort on your part. I, I recommend you for, for doing it. Is there, is there reimbursement to municipalities for adopt, adopting this? And how about their first responders that they adopted? What's, what would be, uh, the upside to the municipalities and/or the first responders?
Yeah, the adoption process for the municipalities is, is, is pretty much just, just a standard resolution. So there's no uh, reimbursement. And the emergency operations, uh, agencies don't adopt the plan. It's, it's just adopted by the municipalities. But again, once it's adopted, those entities can apply for funding. There, there is a, uh, FEMA does have grants to munis, to counties for preparing the plans. And our original plan, we did under a FEMA grant and it nearly killed Mike Stokes. So we, we, we've tried to do it without that. The reporting operate, the requirements and the specific hoops that FEMA makes you jump through. Is the microphone off? It's, it's really, really arduous. Mike, uh, you know, Mike was pulling his hair out, just trying to, to comply with everything. So it's really, i- if you are a, if you are a, uh, uh, somewhat rural county with not a lot of staff, not a lot of resources, it would make sense to get that grant and then have a a consulting firm come in and do your plan. But for someone like us with our abilities and resources, it really was much more trouble than it was worth.
Any comments or questions from staff or public online or in the room?
Same, same theme, theme. If it has household hazardous waste, recycling.
We get up and wiggle around. You ready for another twenty minutes? Yeah, I can, I can be quick. I was at the Huntington Valley Garden Club yesterday. The lovely ladies invited me for a recycling presentation and lunch. And, um, we talked so much, I'm still a little hoarse today. So I'm happy to make this quick. The lunch was lovely, but more than that, they literally had at the, on the food table, they had put olive oil bottles and fresh basil and peppers. And then each table had a tablecloth and there were succulents on each table. It's just, they, they know how to do it right. So if anyone's interested in gardening, I, I recommend the Huntington Valley ladies.
Yes, successful now.
They will help you. They're very open to helping people also.
I don't have the attention span.
Yes, you have to be.
If it doesn't grow in like three days, I'm
Well, for more immediate gratification, they actually have a setup at the flower show. The, the Huntington Valley Garden Club. So you can go see all the best of the best in the region if you go to the flower show. All right. So let me, uh, just give you kind of a, a quick overview of, of, uh, county trends. And then we'll do some specifics as far as the programs that the county runs. So, uh, this is just, you know, the past less than, than ten years, uh, population, as we know, continues to increase. Uh, the trash tonnage is, uh, on a slight increasing trend, but more or less, uh, stable. As more people come in, of course, we do make more trash. Um, so we had a few years where that dipped, but now we're kind of back up to, uh, to being level. Uh, and then the tons of recycling is, is really pretty steady. So of course, what we would like to see is trash going down and recycling going up. Uh, but this recycling trend in particular is just a national number, more or less. We're, we're not moving the needle unless we put some policy in place to actually impact recycling. Uh, we're, we're gonna stay here. So the recycling rate, uh, we're at about that thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four. That's again, the national level. That's what we've been stuck on for years nationally as well. Uh, we have a little bit of a decreasing trend line just because we had a few good years where we lowered trash. So the recycling rate is the recycling and the trash, um, to, to give you that rate. So
Do you think that's due because, due to the capacity to handle the recycling? Or the knowledge base of residents to actually recycle?
I would say whatever comes into our MRFs, our material recovery facilities, we have capacity to recycle. And this number, this data doesn't track to the end manufacturing facility. It doesn't track to the industrial site where it gets turned from water bottles into a laundry basket. So this is really just what gets collected out of our homes and businesses and goes to the material recovery facilities.
And you're saying that thirty-three percent of total waste being sent is recycled material and the other sixty-six is just normal trash. Got it.
Yeah. And the recycling numbers include composting. So this is your yard waste and your food waste is included. This isn't just your plastic bottles and cardboard boxes. So it, it, it would be nice to be higher.
When my kids are home from college, I spend about ten minutes every night pulling trash, pulling recycled materials out of the trash and getting it into recycling. So the education among
Big personal responsibility.
Maybe in trouble with my children, but not in trouble with the, with the whole.
Broader audience. Yeah, the, the.
Yeah, I find that the, it's just, they don't get it.
Not a lot of education towards recycling anymore. There was a golden age, uh, kind of in the late eighties, early nineties, where there's a lot of money going into recycling education in Pennsylvania. And we had, uh, we had mascots and we had assemblies and we had outreach and funding. And then that just ended. And so you see the results. I mean, our young people really don't, they're not, not all the schools have implemented recycling. It not, it's not even Pennsylvania law for all the schools to implement recycling. They don't even have to. So we're really fighting an uphill battle. And the way that a school gets a good recycling program is to have one teacher or one administrator who says, I'm gonna put this on my back and I'm gonna carry it over the line. And that's how you end up with a good program in a school. But if you don't have that one champion who's really willing to fight that fight, you're, you're not gonna have a good program. You're not the only one.
Would I would like to say something? Uh, at Secate, uh, the Centro de Cultura, uh, we have every semester a recycling audit. We invite Dr. Lisa Rodriguez from Villanova University. Um, we collect all the trash, all the trash that is produced in one week. We said, we, we, we keep it in, in bags and et cetera. And we move the whole community of Secate. And then we separate the trash. The result was during the last three years, that sixty-two percent that the trash that Secate produces is recycled. Sixty-two percent. Therefore, that push Secate to actually to reduce the dumpster that we have in the property and to add a recycling dumpster. Because it's sixty-two percent. Therefore, three years ago, we adopted that policy in Secate. And twice per, per semester, we invite Dr. Lisa Rodriguez, because always we have new students to be educated with their families about this. Now, this is the effort that Secate is doing. Sixty-two percent of the trash is recycling. Please, please do.
Well, and that is, that is a wonderful program.
But, but, yeah, but, but, but the thing is that the idea of Secate is that we can influence public policies. And this is hard data. This is hard data of a sector where two hundred and five families participate. Therefore, I don't know how, for example, this impact that Secate is having already with these families can actually be poised in a bigger way, because this is hard data that, that pushes to put our, our bodies into this effort of hiding a recycling dumpster.
But I find the numbers you share very interesting. It's almost a reverse.
Exactly.
No change in their lifestyle or habits. It was simply looking at their waste and really looking at what's recyclable, what versus what it's not. There was, and lifestyle change is a whole nother piece of it. But just that alone, you could change these numbers significantly.
I mean, I really would like to invite you one day to have this meeting at Secate. We are only four blocks away. Really, for you to see the ecological efforts and the, and the efforts that we are doing with native plants in the gardens, with the recycling center, with the things that we're educational.
Yeah. If every school, some, schools do what you're describing here and there. But if every school had the science class or the math class in, you know, fourth grade, do that sort, we would change these numbers. I mean, something that small really just has this amazing impact of, of, uh, consciousness to understand what, how much we're throwing away that we don't have to be. And you, you, uh, mentioned the economic impact. If, if you're doing this as a business or even as a school, you end up instead of paying for, uh, you know, the, the small, the large dumpster, you end up paying for the medium or the small dumpster. So it, it can really be impactful on multiple levels. But it's a rare occurrence. We don't have a lot of these.
I brought a question along those lines. Let's say the rate of recycling went from thirty-three percent to fifty percent. Does the, does the system have the ability to absorb and manu, and be able to handle that increased load?
It definitely does. And, um, so the majority of recycling is paper. It's cardboard and paper. That's um, about sixty percent of what we recycle. Uh, and then you have your plastic and your metal and your glass. The plastic component in particular, which is about twelve percent. Uh, the manufacturers of a lot of the big brands have made pledges that they want to do a hundred percent recycled plastic in their bottles or, you know, a hundred percent recycled aluminum in their cans. There's not enough for them to do it. In other words, we, we are not making enough.
And the reason I say that is because a friend of mine is the General Counsel at Crown, at Crown, which is can makers. They make cans all over the world. And he said the same thing. He said they, they, they buy up as much, as much aluminum recycling as they can. Um, but it's not enough.
Now, if you want to fix that tomorrow, we can. Every time one of us buys a can of soda or a can of beer, you pay a ten cent deposit. And when you bring it back, you get your ten cents back. And what that will do tomorrow, the day we implement this law, because it's in ten states already, the recycling rate goes from the twenties or thirties up to the eighties in a day. Okay, so we have the ability. It's a policy issue. And if we're not going to be serious about the policy, it, it's another ten years of this.
A one capacity we have to actually to, to design and implement a policy.
The legislation, the, the legislation exists. It's not, we can't do anything on the county level. It has to be a state level. Has to be state.
Neighboring states that are part of that ten or you're just curious?
A bottle bill state, uh, I, I don't, I don't. There's some in the Midwest, like Michigan is one, Maine is one. It's none of our neighbors, but you know, in the area more or less. Really, it's supposed to be a national policy, because now you have the leakage over the borders and you have, especially in California, they have a lot of fraud with people from Arizona bring stuff in, you know, to get their ten cents and they didn't put the ten cent. So it's supposed to be a national. No criminal activity, please.
Go to a state that has a recycling program like that.
Yeah, bring your.
Party before I drive there.
Bring your, bring your bottles with you. Yeah.
But you know, a lot of the press is also dampening because you're constantly hearing the message, oh, it's not really getting recycled. You're putting it in there and it's not. And I think that dampens people's energy in working personally.
It, it a hundred percent does. And recycling is local. So when you get a, a national news story that's talking about, you know, Iowa, I, I have not, I, I don't, I'm just throwing that out there. You know, pick a random state. I'm not sure what's going on there, but let's say Iowa had to cancel their recycling programs because they don't have markets for what they've been collecting. That has nothing to do with what's happening on the east coast. It has nothing to do with what's happening on the west coast. It's, it's all very local to the point of regional more, you know, more than super local. But, you know, this is regional. And when you hear about pro, programs collapsing, it's not what's happening everywhere. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Does the single strain recycling waste contamination affect some of those numbers where you have to reject materials?
Yes. So if you are rejecting loads based on contamination, you're not hitting the scale to go into the recycling numbers. So this, this data comes off of the scale. The trash data comes off the scale when you pull in your trash truck to the, to the landfill or the waste to energy plant. And the recycling data comes from the scale when you pull into the MRF, the material recovery facility. So if that load is partially or totally rejected, then that, uh, that's not going to make it through. Uh, there is about a fifteen percent, uh, residue rate when you talk about what the MRF, the material recovery facility has to put into the landfill. And that is not even reflected in this. So if you want to backtrack and pull out residue, these numbers go even lower.
What would, what would reject the load?
Uh, let's say you had, um, someone who put, or a number of places where you had trash put into the recycling dumpster. Like, let's say a, you know, a bigger place like a commercial entity or a school, you know, the people just pull, instead of sorting it, it just all went in the recycling dumpster. Then when it comes in, you see you have diapers and goo oozing out and you know, orange peels. We can't, we can't, the equipment is so We can't, we can't, the equipment is so expensive in these MRFs, tens of millions of dollars. You can't just put trash through it and hope you don't destroy your. Your equipment. So uh, you know, you have optical sorters, you have sensitive, sensitive things in there. Um, so yeah, you have, the trash has to be, I can't. Pick through piece by piece and pull out the can that's surrounded by by trash.
That's interesting you say that, because I was just down to Flyers game on Monday. The Flyers are horrible. Anyhow.
But they have gritty.
Huh?
They have gritty.
They go gritty. Looks like he's on opioids.
He's a hazard. He's a hazard.
Trying to, trying to tie it all together. It's a hard, it's a hard effort, but trying to tie it all together. And you know, they have track, they have recycling cans and they have trash cans, then. They're right next to each other. And it's amazing. You just watch people and like I separated everything and probably annoyed a few people that were behind me trying to throw their stuff out. But people just don't, they don't even read.
You were educated.
They don't even read the sign. They don't even read the sign. They don't even read the trash cans. They just, it's throwing stuff in there. So I don't know.
It's not easy. I mean.
And what happens from the, what happens from? The, you know, the staff at Wells Fargo Center, they actually taking it out and keeping it separated or are they just putting it together?
Well, so they'll have a recycling dumpster and a trash dumpster and and whatever you and I decide is trash, they put in the trash can. And whatever you and I decide is recycling, they put in the recycling can. And then it's. Onto the MRF. And the MRF has to figure out, you know, how much trash is really in there and can we recover it? Or do we have to just dump the whole load as as trash? So it is, it is an individual thing that we impact the bigger system if we're making bad choices in that moment at the Flyers game.
I know at Antrack, we don't have the staff to sort the waste. It's it, nor do we want our people coming in and going.
But do you have some cans? Do you have separate receptacles?
Yeah, it's just like, it's the same thing. It's like the. Single string recycling is getting affected by people throwing trash.
Right.
Right. So yeah, it's getting. It's lowering the numbers.
Yeah, I mean, to like what our staff at the county has to do. Uh, you know, the individual cleaning person doesn't really like to pick through all of our trash or recycling cans. But we did get cited by Waste Management for not, for having too much trash in our recycling. So do you have your cleaning people pick through everything before you put it in the dumpster? And if you don't, your dumpster might get rejected and and you get fined for having too much contamination. So there's buy-in on a lot of levels, which is why I still have a job and, you know, why we.
I think the education part of this is just.
It's so critical and we're just, we're just blowing it. We're just blowing it.
I have no idea what they should and shouldn't recycle. Like, I had somebody tell me you can't put a pizza box in the park board. I'm like. Sure you can.
If it's green. It has oil on it, depending as.
Right, if it's a dirty box. But see, that's the thing. Like, we, I can't just say, yes, pizza box, no pizza box. We actually have to talk about it for a minute. And and nobody wants to talk for a minute. It's like we have to get to the next thing, like. Pizza box, throw it, go. And i- if there's a little discussion involved.
It's amazing. When this was happening, the kids were so into it.
Oh, yeah.
Kids love this. My kids, my kids in California who have to have it in their curriculum or more, man, if I do anything that's out of. The uh, Grammy, no. Police.
Yeah.
The recycling seeds, if I brush my teeth with the water on, Grammy, turn off the water. Because. They're into it.
Yeah, if you teach kids at that young age, the rules, kids, li- little kids love rules, right? And they love to tell the parents when they break. So it's just such a golden opportunity that we have. And I will say on the positive side. Uh, the state DEP does seem to be going in a direction of more interest. Towards recycling education. They're running a study right now of what's happening in the schools. So they can try to do more outreach on the state level. And on the federal level, uh, there was legislation that passed last year. That's gonna be putting grants out to uh, states and municipalities for education specifically. So you need to now have, you know, hire an advertising firm or have someone in house who can do education, because they're not putting it together for you. But they will put some grant funding towards it. So this is the first time we've seen any money towards this, uh, you know, in a long time. So it is, there is some hopefully encouraging news coming. Okay, uh, so very quickly, uh, I just, the the twenty twenty trash data is in, I am still collecting the twenty, I'm sorry. Twenty-two trash data is in. I'm still collecting the recycling data. But um, just an interesting thing to point out. Uh, so we don't have any landfills in Montgomery County, any active landfills. We do have the waste to energy plant, which is where the trash is incinerated. And uh, the the total that went there last year is down from the forty-four percent range to the thirty-two percent range. So that's just an interesting development that more of our municipalities and and businesses are trucking out of county to landfills. Uh, rather than uh, keeping it.
By what happened a few years ago with the. Expanding the.
Yes, but the Waste Authority disbanded back in twenty fourteen. So this is, you know, we should have, that that should have kind of evened out. As far as an immediate effect.
I think a lot of municipalities.
Were locked in.
Were locked in.
Yes.
We're starting to see some of those contracts or.
Yes.
They're even just solidify or going out and other people have tried other things and have seen the positive or, you know, what.
Well, if it's cheaper to take it, you know, to the landfill and you can handle the trucking costs, then, you know, that's a decision that that each municipality can can make and each business can make. So that's it. That's just interesting. I have not seen it that low since I've been here. And um. So there's, uh, you know, a bit of an uptick going to the landfills in Berks County and even out to York County. Fourteen percent of our trash gets trucked all the way through Lancaster out to York. So um.
It'll be interesting to see your recycling numbers. I'm wondering, I I mean, years ago, that's not so so many, but within the last ten years, I went to the. Mascaro Recycling, which is, I think I was with you.
We're together, yeah.
It it was.
It's something, yeah.
I'm field trip.
Yeah. Yeah, we could do another MRF field trip. It's it's really just changes the game.
Interesting.
Yeah. No, it's good stuff. We we can do that again.
My kids.
Required.
Yeah, kids. All right. So uh, the thing that the county does, the municipalities obviously handle their own trash and recycling. They have their own system. They make their own decisions. The state law is kind of the Wild West. You can sort of do what you, what you uh, what you want. Uh, but there's a few things that the municipalities uh, don't handle that the county steps in for. And uh, so I do a uh, campaign yard sign recycling collection. Uh, we do have a program that collects electronic waste and textiles. And of course, the world famous household hazardous waste events. So uh, as far as the campaign yard sign recycling, uh, we run this every November just after the general election. We don't do the primary. And it's a one-week drop-off period. We're up to sixteen sites around the county. So these are all municipalities that volunteer to just handle a bunch. Of piles and piles of campaign signs coming into them. Uh, Skipback uh, was gracious enough to sign on for twenty-two. We had kind of a. An area there that wasn't covered. Uh, and then um, we had added some other townships previous. So we're up to sixteen sites. The stands uh, and the signs are recyclable, but they're not a material that goes into the curbside mix. So if you put these metal signs in, you're gonna probably poke out someone's eye who's sorting that material. Uh, but you're also just gonna destroy the equipment. Like, it, the only metal that gets handled in the MRF is cans, like. No strange metal, yeah. Yeah, no pots or pans or lawn mowers or anything like that. That's that's all scrap metal. Uh, and then the signs are either plastic or cardboard and they can be recycled. So the, there is not a cost to the county for this program other than employee time. Uh, the big, big hero in all of this is the Montgomery County Correctional Facility. Uh, they have this really nice community service program for people who are uh, being. Re- released and are, you know, nonviolent. And uh, they actually uh, go out in this truck that they. Sort of put together. And um, the guys with an officer go out and collect all the signs. Takes them about another week to do that. They sorted for me. Um, and uh, the recycling happens without a charge. This is um, the the best, Bestin County goes to Upper Dublin. That's their uh, drop-off for their signs. And that is just magnificent. Um, but you know, some, some municipalities just put, put out boxes or um, this is kind of clever. To just put out the um. Traffic barriers and throw the signs in the middle. Uh, after the prison sorts them, they have a dumpster full of metal. And you know, that's, that's a value that they can uh, take to the scrapyard and get paid for uh, to reimburse some of their gas costs. And um. Donna Karamenico, who is the other half of the recycling department with me, uh, she and I borrowed a box truck from Assets. And uh, the prison. Guys filled it up for us with all of the plastic signs that they collected. And we went out to Kugel's Recycling in Berks County. And uh, we recycled uh. One point five tons just of the plastic. Um, so it was quite an eventful day. What you don't see is we are absolutely surrounded by tractor trailers. We were the only like civilians on the site. Um, but yeah, it's it's a nice little program and people definitely get excited about it. The other program that the county runs, uh, I have a contract with a company called Retriever. And uh, Retriever does this pickup service and it's at your home. It's not a drop-off. And you just text pick up to that fetch number. And you put in your address. If you're Montco, we have a contract that covers Montco. So they will come to your home. Uh, you tell them if they're picking up clothing or electronics or both. And they offer you dates. You schedule a date. And then you just pack it up and you leave it out front. They don't come in your house. They don't, you don't have to. Interact with another human. Uh, and then they pick it up and they have it recycled. So there's a fee for uh, like a television costs thirty-five dollars for them to to pick up and recycle. There's a few things they'll charge for like um. Uh, air conditioner or microwave. But if it's computers, that's free. Printers are free. Clothing is free. Um, if you're not paying for something, there's like a a five or ten, I think it's a five dollar pickup charge. Yeah, just like for a fuel charge, basically. Uh, so this is available throughout the whole county. And uh, had we started this in twenty nineteen. So the first year I have a full year data is twenty twenty. So it's it's pretty consistent. I mean, we haven't had any big jumps. But you know, we're serving uh, two thousand to three thousand households a year. And uh, you know, we pick up some apparel, but of course, we have a lot of drop-offs all around the county where you can drop off your your clothing for recycling. Uh, but electronics, especially if you want someone to pick it up and you don't want to have to track it, you know, around the county to to try to get it recycled. Uh, you know, it's a lot of TVs that we're picking up. And uh, the really, there's not free options to get rid of TVs anymore. You're gonna have to pay in this area to get rid of it. Um, there's one free drop-off and it's in Philly. You have to go to, go down to to um. Philly and they have two days a week you can drop it off. But other than that, you know, you're paying about thirty-five a TV. So they'll come to your house and do it. Um, the actual numbers for the whole county are even higher than this, but six municipalities decided to sign their own contracts directly with Retriever. So that data doesn't come into me. Like Norristown has their own Retriever contract. So they get their own numbers. So the numbers for the county are even higher um, than this. And it's it's a nice, um, it's a nice program. So the last one and the 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 big one for sure is household hazardous waste. And uh, just a reminder, these are your toxic or flammable materials. Uh, that have an environmental health or safety risk if not disposed of properly. So just an example, putting a flammable chemical out in your trash. Or putting uh, chlorine pool chemicals out in your trash. And then the trash truck catches on fire. Or the chlorine gets uh, you know, goes airborne and the the guys breathe it in. So that would be an example of of hazardous waste that we have in our households. Uh, some more examples, um, gasoline, oil, antifreeze. Those are all things that that we actually can recycle out of these events. Uh, oil-based paint is actually flammable. Pool chemicals, the chlorine is is highly toxic. Uh, mercury flares, fire extinguishers, the herbicides and pesticides are obviously toxic. Uh, lead acid batteries can cause fires and are are highly recyclable. And uh, we are still phasing out the fluorescent tubes. So they they're still, they're still out there. People are still bringing them in. And the mini propane uh, camping containers. We we get a lot of those. There's a lot of camping going on in Montco. Uh, so this is just, I won't go through all the numbers, just give you a trend. I mean, we're we're staying. You know, if I gave you a longer trend, we're on a slight increase. We do kind of get bigger, more. Pounds, uh, more people participating and um, more of a cost. But it, you know, it's it's a, it's a pretty straight line trending upward. Uh, the thing that I'll point out is the DEP grant is a hundred thousand a year. So that's what's reimbursed to the county. Um, but when you're spending over, you know, five hundred thousand in a year, a hundred thousand, it's nice, but it's it's not really helping. It's supposed to be fifty percent. So the idea was counties won't spend more than two hundred thousand. And here we are spending five hundred. So the DEP grant, um, we would like to see that increased. Uh, but you can see, you know, we're around six thousand participants and we have seven events a year. So, you know, the average is a bit of, a bit under a thousand people a year. And uh, it's a, it's a lot of material, you know, almost half a million pounds came in. Uh, to the events last year. And to to give you a vision of that, it's like two to three tractor trailers. We fill with chemicals at at each event. So I mentioned the hundred thousand is reimbursed by DEP, which is supposed to be fifty percent. Um, I I've been trying to get the legislature, Pennsylvania Legislature, to increase that to two hundred and fifty thousand from a hundred thousand. This is, I've had it introduced four times. This year, we got it. I'm feeling really good about the fourth time. Um, Senator Penny Cook is a uh. Senator from Montgomery County. She does Montgomery County and Berks. We both have big programs. We both need more funding. Um, she's a Republican in the Senate, so that gives us a better chance of passing it in the Senate. And um, I just, I think this is our year. The um, municipalities don't pay for this. The residents don't pay for this. This this is very expensive, obviously. You know, when you're talking about a half million dollars. So the county covers the expense. And the Montgomery program is the largest event program in the state. Um, the huh, Lancaster County has a permanent facility. So they actually collect more than us because they're open. You know, five or six days a week. But we do seven events and are the biggest in the state as far as uh, events go. So, um. The mentioning Lancaster County doing with a much smaller population than us, doing more hazardous waste than us. It gives you the message that if we had a permanent facility, we would be collecting a lot more material. It's out there. It's just if people aren't aware of these seven events or can't attend these seven events. They're just stockpiling this material. And if you are in emergency management and have a garage full of chemicals and somehow a fire starts. That turns into a small, from a small house fire into a hazmat event. Uh, and that does happen around the county. It's it's not, it's it's should be more rare than it is. So um, the hope, the goal, the dream is the recycling center for Montgomery County. Uh, where we would have a convenient uh, drop-off, not only for the household hazardous waste, the chemicals. But also for electronic waste and for just your miscellaneous recyclables. You have a big party, you want to bring me your cans. You know, they won't fit in your trash. Well, you know, in your recycling, we'll take all that stuff. This would be year-round rather than one-day events. Uh, this would reduce illegal dumping. Um, minimize waste, increase recycling. That's, you know, the overall goal. But I I also like to to think of it, at least in my vision of this, it's kind of a community hub. So if people are interested in recycling and interested in reuse, it's the place where you can come and learn about things and. You know, maybe figure out a project or a program for your municipality. Um, so I I like to to think of this as having a community aspect as well. Uh, so this is my last slide. This is the Ivy Rock Quarry. That is now filled. This is next to Plymouth Covanta. And uh, it's about fifty acres, if I remember correctly. And we're asking for three of those fifty. To be a recycling center for Montgomery County. So hopefully, a year from now, I will bring you the rendering. Of our site and.
It should be noted, uh, the zoning does not support this right now, so we'll. We'll talk to Plymouth and see if they will be uh. Great. Any other, any questions? Board members, field trip, field trip.
Yes, yes.
Veronica, I do have a question. Uh, first of all, thank you very much for, this is really interesting.
Oh, good.
I am being approached by elected officials. I am being approached by elected officials in Lansdale about a program where a third-party company asks you to collect electronic recycling. Uh, and if you collect twenty thousand pounds of recycling and wrap it and package it, they'll send a fifty-three foot tractor trailer to your site to get it out of your way. Are you familiar with any of this? This sounds like it's filled with a whole bunch of issues on my end. Are you familiar with similar programs?
I am familiar with it. I don't know what company specifically is trying to do this, but the state law is so flawed that it's supposed to be free for all of us. The TVs are, they're supposed to be picked up for free under state law and the state law just does not work. And I can't, I'm again trying and Senator um, Penny Cook is working on this um, with us. But you know, we're trying to amend the law, but until we get the law amended, it's programs like what you're describing that are trying to come in and offer this uh, free collection. So you supply the labor and the facility. So it's not free, free. But, and the company would take the material and have it recycled for you. So that doesn't strike me as, as uh, sounding fraudulent. That's just strikes me as a way that some of these recycling companies are trying to figure out how to make this law work. And if you were just going to supply the labor and the site, they'll do the recycling for free and they'll get reimbursed by the manufacturers of the televisions under the state law.
Okay.
So we can talk about that more if you want to contact me because I do know the companies.
I might reach out to you for a little bit more insight before I, because I don't have a funding stream to support this.
Right, that's why it's free, because you need the funding stream.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Sure, sure.
Anybody else? Thanks Veronica.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, oh. Yeah.
Uh, there's just been, there's been a recent set of articles in Weaver's Ways newspaper, The Shuttle, about recycling. I don't know Veronica, if you've seen them.
No.
Um, you can take a look. It's online, but they're, they're sort of, there's people making this argument that it's not worth the water that we take to wash out plastics because they're almost all thrown away anyway and that um,
Yeah.
we're wasting clean drinking water on washing something that then goes in the trash. I don't know if you have any input on that one specifically related to plastic.
Just, I know I'm out of time. No, just real quick. Um, so California is in a drought like most years. And so they don't want you reci- rinsing recycling. They want you scraping it. So if, if you're worried about water and you want to recycle that peanut butter jar, you can scrape that out with your spatula. Um, the other thing is like if I have a peanut butter jar or mayonnaise jar, I put it in the dishwasher. And I'm not saying I run the dishwasher with one mayonnaise jar in it. I'm saying if you have something dirty and you're running your dishwasher, put your dirty stuff in it and then you have clean recycling. There's not a law against putting recycling in the dishwasher. And finally, um, ones and twos plastics are definitely getting recycled. The water used to extract natural uh, gas, including the water we're pumping into the ground to do the fracking for the natural gas, to extract the poly- the plastic, you know, polymers to make the water bottle. There is no planet where rinsing that for two seconds and putting in the recycling bin, a number one or two plastic bottle somehow creates more water than fracking the natural gas out of the ground to make a new bottle. So I completely reject the argument, um, at least for ones and twos bottles. When you're talking about three through sevens, a lot of that stuff is not easily recyclable. So if you want to say there's a weird plastic and it's going to take me ten minutes of soap and water to wash it, throw it away. But a one or a two, I will argue this to the end, that needs to be rinsed and needs to be recycled.
We need to get you to write an editorial to the shuttle.
Okay, thank you. The next up we have a community planning update, Wes Martin and Colin Naomi and Kevin.
Stephen, I was just going to mention, while they're coming up, if you want Veronica to come to your house, talk to your kids. You need to provide them with lunch.
And it is a systemic issue. It's just the recycling, they don't listen to anything.
Yeah.
But I appreciate you all tonight.
What college do they go? Uh, what's that?
What college do they go?
One goes to Tampa and one goes to science.
Temple or the science?
Yeah.
I'll put that to them.
A different angle with that.
Down with Sakate to the uh, Temple Formula Racing.
Yeah.
Then my son is one of the leads there. Should have talked on that. It's an opportunity.
We have it for both, for Temple and for the science.
Yeah.
Where do I aim it? There?
Oh, no, anywhere. It doesn't, you don't have to point nowhere.
Okay.
All right.
All right, ready?
We're ready.
Great. Um, I'm Naomi Crim. I'm a community planner with the county. Um, and one of the um, communities I work in is West Norton Township. You want to?
And I'm Kevin Shibulum. I'm a design planner.
I know Kevin, that's Kevin.
All right, so um, just quickly, these are the folks involved in the township. I'll just mention that Jason Boobs is the township manager and he was up in Pottstown before. And then when he came down to West Norton, he was the one who started the contract there. And our main contact is Mike Value. So um, I'm going to share some land use and census data, just to give you sort of a high level sense of the township and who lives there. Um, currently I'm working on, we just started the comprehensive plan update, so currently working on gathering a bunch of demographic data. Um, so I wanted to give you sort of a snapshot so far, but I'll, I'll go into the comp plan update more later in the presentation. Um, but so overall, the township is five point nine square miles. It's adjacent to Norristown Borough and bordered by East Norton, Upper Marion, and Lower Providence. Um, largely residential today, as you can see, forty-six percent. Um, and the topography has really influenced the, the development of the township historically. So the steep slopes by the Skookal River uh, made this side of the river largely unusable for industry. So when communities like Norristown or Conshohocken had this strong industrial base in the nineteenth century, uh, West Norton remained largely agricultural and then they saw that shift over to residential with a big population increase in the fifties and sixties. Um, so here's the, the population trends um, from nineteen thirty to twenty twenty. Um, about sixteen thousand residents today and you can see that big population increase between fifties and the seventies. And then between twenty ten and twenty twenty, there was a three percent increase. Um, West Norton has a higher population density than all the surrounding townships, um, likely due to the amount of multifamily in the township. So I'll just go through this quickly. This chart just shows some household trends. So West Norton leads the area in single-person households at forty percent, which um, again might be due to the amount of multifamily. Has the hot, the smallest percentage of households with school-aged children than any of its neighbors at sixteen percent. Um, and then thirty-three percent of the, the town, of the households have one or more persons aged sixty-five rollers, which matches the, what we see in the county. Um, we also see from the census, uh, not in this chart, but the, the household trends show that the, the population is aging. So the median age is, is forty-five, which is among the highest in the area. Um, and we also see from the census data that West Norton is becoming more diverse. So if its neighboring community has the greatest um, increase in the Hispanic and Latino population between twenty ten and twenty twenty. And um, apart from Norristown Borough, um, West Norton has the highest concentration of residents identifying as Hispanic and Latino in this region. So seven percent of the population, which isn't that big, but comparatively higher. Um, some income and economic characteristics. A lot of this data is um, influenced by the number of older residents and single-person households. But we see that the median household income seventy-seven thousand is lower than um, it's among the lowest of the surrounding townships. And we see that poverty levels are higher than surrounding municipalities and the county, with the exception of, of Norristown Borough. Um, on a, similarly unemployment rate is, is higher and the percentage of households receiving food stamps and SNAP is also um, higher. So the predominant housing type is a single-family detached home, uh, followed by structures with five or more units. And since two thousand, the housing unit type that has increased the most are buildings with five or more units. So sixty-nine percent increase, followed by buildings with two to four units. Um, so overall, the census and land use data is showing us that West Norton is an established, built-out community. It's projected to see continued growth over the next thirty years. That's what DVR P, DVR PC predicts. Um, it's largely a bedroom community, although the number of employment centers has increased over time. And we see the population is aging and becoming more diverse. So some of the recent work we've done for the township, um, in twenty twenty-one, we completed a sign ordinance to be more aligned with the county's model ordinance. And then in twenty twenty-two, I worked with the planning commission to complete the West Main Street Commercial District, uh, which I just presented to the board of commissioners last night, so they're going to be voting on that soon. But this district stretches from Trooper Road. How does this work? Yeah, Trooper Road to Forest Ave. Um, it affects all the parcels that you see over here in blue. Um, and it's replacing all of the, the underlying zoning districts and there's an overlay that it's replacing as well. So the idea here is to implement the vision in the twenty nineteen vision plan, which um, we're intending to encourage mixed-use development and better design standards. So um, I'll just talk a little bit more about this and then Kevin is going to go into the um, design testing that we did for, for this district. But the vision plan had recommended that the parcels in this district be grouped into three categories of front yard setbacks. So the twenty-foot setback in green, the thirty-five-foot setback in yellow, and then the fifty-foot setback in orange. And the idea was to get most of the buildings closer to the street to activate the streetscape, um, make it a little less car-oriented. Um, so what seemed to make the most sense to operationalize this was divide, was to divide the parcels up by lot depth and then structure the rest of the dimensional standards around that. So we had three categories of lot depths, lots that are less than three hundred feet, lots that are between three hundred and six hundred, and then lots that are six hundred feet or more. And so then over the summer, we did some testing of the ordinance standards. Um, and these, the, the parcels that are circled in red show the, the parcels that we, we tested. So one from each lot depth category. And so Kevin's going to talk about the test.
And, and you know, it's important to note, obviously, that planning is a process. And you know, the challenging thing is working with municipal officials, working with residents, you know, working with our staff and formulating, you know, the best solution to the problem. And one of the challenges with this particular um, ordinance uh, exercise was the fact that you saw the diversity of that corridor and, you know, was developed over a long period of time. And there are different types of buildings, different types of uses. And you know, we want to develop one ordinance and and I hate to say it's, it's a one-size-fits-all, but that was our challenge where, you know, we want these standards to work regardless of the parcel, um, and regardless of what the existing or the neighboring use is. So what we did was we took representative parcels like they just said, and we just took a test to that parcel to see if the language as written actually works. So just to save time, I'm just showing you one parcel that we did and that's this particular site right here. And again, what we go through is the fact that we look at the existing conditions. We look at the existing land use. We look at the ordinance provisions, that is, the proposed ordinance provisions. And you know, we looked at building setbacks, building coverage, parking setbacks, pedestrian standards. And we want to see, you know, with these numbers, how is this going to work? Because you know, the law of unintended consequences will tell you that, you know, you, you, you want to do something, but, and you have the best intentions, but you know, it may not work. So we want to see, obviously before the ordinance is adopted, that the standards that are being proposed actually work. So we also looked at um, open space. And this is one of the biggest challenges because there was a desire in a part of municipality to have a green area on the site. Um, you know, the, the uses proposed are commercial, residential and so forth. And you know, the existing conditions, you know, you have a sea of parking lots and buildings and a lot of that. Well, and you know, they didn't really want, obviously, they didn't want that. So we developed open space requirements. And again, the challenge was, is this going to work? And you know, they wanted the open space to be meaningful, you know, not just a little square with one bench. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, can we accommodate a use? You know, how does parking work? You know, how's this open space going to work? So you know, we, we took these um, conditions and we kind of came up with these scenarios of what the site could possibly be. There is a desire on the part of the community, you know, they wanted to see mixed use. So we took a look at, you know, what would a program be? And this is something that we developed, you know, what would the program be if we did office and apartment, retail and office? Or just retail or office only? So we put those standards to the test. We developed the program. And we just went through this and we developed, you know, this was kind of an exercise, nothing fancy, you know, nothing lengthy, just a quick exercise to show what these particular sites would be if these particular ordinance provisions were put in place. And you know, we, we sort of took notes. One, one of the biggest challenges, like I said before, was the front yard. You know, the existing condition, um, obviously is, you know, parking in the front. They want it's, you know, a green area, a planting strip. They wanted part of, they, they didn't want parking. They wanted a plaza area. And again, we sort of played around with different kinds of schemes to show that, you know, we can do this and it is feasible. So that was the purpose of the, the testing and exercise. And it did inform, um, you know, the rest of the ordinance. So, and you know, just to confirm that it did work. And then we also created these frontage and street state requirements, you know. And again, this is something that they desired, something they wanted. And it was very good to be able to say, hey, you know, you want this, you know, we can do this, you know, we can write the language. You know, to, to, to make the intent of what you want, you know, to happen. So.
That's great. Thanks, Kevin.
I'm sure.
All right. So that was um, that was prior work. And then the current work for the current contract is the comprehensive plan update, which we just started. Uh, the kickoff was last month. Um, so the, they did a shorter um, comp plan update in twenty-ten. And then before that, the most recent complan is from nineteen sixty-three. Um, so these are notes just um, from an exercise we did at the first steering committee meeting, sort of indicating township priorities. So um, recreational programming facilities was a big thing, better access to the waterfront, um, connections to the farm park, uh, more trees and sidewalks. So this is a, the comp plan, you know, is going to take up the, the two-year contract. Um, and here the, the contract terms. That's, that's all we've got. Any questions?
Uh-huh. Sorry. Any questions for Naomi on West Arm? Anybody?
I guess this was sent in the package. This report was sent, was sent in the package.
Probably not.
I don't think the power, but I could.
I would love it. I would love it because many of the, of the community, they had it second to confirm actually West Norton.
Okay.
And also with the red district area, I think that's his mother indeed now, no?
Um, yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, because it was changed. Many of it is kind of nice. It's in Norristown. And I think mother indeed now is in.
Okay.
It was Norristown.
Okay.
And I have some conversations.
So quickly on what you were looking at, the testes of the ordinance that you were writing, um, do they have a desire for multifamily or is their desire a realistic? Do you have a sense of whether it's a realistic desire to create the density that makes it necessary to develop?
Yeah, I mean, I think they're, they're certainly interested in mixed use. So that's, that's what we put in. So you know, office or uh, commercial on the first floor and then residential on the second floor. And uh, there, the ordinance previously, they only allowed thirty-five feet and then we went up to fifty, up to sixty-five with bonuses. So.
What are they thinking? What are they looking at as far as density?
Um, we didn't regulate density per se. I mean, we regulated like the um, the size of the units, but not, we didn't put in like strict density standards. That's what we're asking.
So is determination on density just based on what you can fill on the site and what you can put in the height of the building?
Yeah.
Yes.
And how much parking you can?
And the, like the lot coverage. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, board members, online? I know John had to go. So, thank you very much and I appreciate you running through it quickly. Sorry for the wait. And then our last uh, community planning update for East Green goes. Them, they don't have. Sitting there very patient all, all morning.
To be patient, you need to drive to the screen.
Veronica, two, these are the two planners that you asked about. Who's covering college? I don't know who else. Uh, East Greenville, um, EGB. Well, this is kind of, it really is important, the testing.
Well, this is kind of, it really is important, the testing, um more developed language that's unique to a community and tailored into a plan that they've developed. Not just because it's the prudent thing to make sure it works, but oftentimes communities ask, where else has it been done? Who else has done this work? Can you point some examples? And if it is brand new to that community, we don't have that, so bringing in the the pictures and then the design that that are done. Um, really helps show them what they're gonna end up with.
Definitely, like, I think we, I think, I mean, I worked on the Abington one, and we should have done a lot more testing. And actually, I don't think we did any testing. Take us to East Greenville.
Alright, well, thank you. I'm Tim Kenechi, I'm a community planner here, um and I work with East Greenville Borough. Um, so East Greenville is the northwest of the county. Um, it's part of the Upper Perkyomen Valley region, and I also work with Eric in the Upper Perk Regional Planning Commission. Population is pretty small, it's just over three thousand people. Uh, it grew by seven point three percent over the last ten years, which is right in line with Montgomery County, which grew about seven percent from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty. Um, it's just a half square mile, so it's quite small, and then the population density is quite high. Um, primarily due to the uh historic pattern of development, it's a lot of attached dwelling units. Versus detached dwelling units. Uh, D V R P C forecasts, under four percent population growth through twenty-fifty. Um, much lower than Montgomery County, which is over twelve percent over that same time period. And then the average household size is two point six people. Um, that is higher than than Montgomery County, which is about two point four two, I believe. Um, and the median age is thirty-two, which is also lower than Montgomery County, which is, I believe, around, it's forty-one point two. Um, so definitely seeing younger families, largely because the housing is more affordable, and that's those townhomes duplexes and twins. Um, as far as the borough administration, uh Jim Frye is the manager, kind of a jack of all trades, pretty much does everything in the borough there. Uh, the Borough Council President is Angie Fegley. Um, she's also very involved with the Planning Commission, uh so she attends most meetings and is actually just. At their Borough Council meeting on Tuesday at their request, talked about electric vehicle charging stations and deployment. Um, and then the Planning Commission Chair is Greg Drew, who's also getting involved with the Regional Planning Commission lately. And the, they use Eastburn and Gray and Cowan Associate Associates. And they're part of the Upper Perkyomen School District, which roughly shares the same boundaries as the Regional Planning Commission, with the exception of Hartford. Um, like I mentioned, land use is primarily residential. Um, coming in the form of detached, single-family detached, which is under twenty-six percent of the acreage in the borough. Uh, followed up by. Twins and duplexes at fifteen percent and townhomes at eleven percent. So that gets you at a majority around fifty-two percent of uh acreage in the borough is residential. Um, as you can see in.
And where, where are the younger people working?
Um, it might be a lot of those warehouses that are popping up throughout that region, um and there is manufacturing right in here. Um, this industrial section is actually quite intense, heavy industrial manufacturing and processing, and smack of the metal.
There's some manufacturing, there are some companies right north and up six sixty-three then.
Yeah, and look, I'm trying to think, looking at the uh Upper Perk Com Plan, I think a lot of people do leave the region, so they go to Quaker Town, Lehigh Valley, that sort of thing for, for jobs.
Use those to, you know, average so low in a small community like this.
Yeah. Um, let's see what else. The, there is a lot of institutional down here, so these parcels are primarily the Perkyomen School. Um, Pensberg's right here where their primary campus kinda is, and then there's the uh four-five center, which is part of the Upper Perkyomen School District. Contract terms, it goes through twenty-twenty-five, it's a a day and a half of planner day per month. Eight night meetings per year, which constitutes a little bit of an increase over the last contract periods where we were providing six night meetings. That's just kind of reflection of the workload that they've been asking for. They've been very aggressive in um kind of planning for their main street in particular. I should get to to in just a moment. Total cost is just under forty-eight thousand dollars per year, and of course, they pay half, we pay half. In the last contract period, we gave them an entirely new saldo. I kinda joined that process halfway through. Chloe was the community planner before me. I kinda joined in and we both worked on that with Patty, Evan, and some other um design folks. Um, and of course, you know, it's a section-wide effort when you're looking at a full saldo. Um, so they got new fancy cross-sections, all sorts of useful graphics, and kinda just implementing our best practices. And I think a lot of the landscaping requirements and that sort of stuff is gonna feed into the future updates to our model saldo. We updated the zoning ordinance, so that was primarily focused looking at uses where they're permitted. They kinda had that old style where it was, you know, a laundry list of what would be allowed, an ice cream shop, candy shop, that sort of thing. Making it simpler and easier, knowing what's allowed where, adding in some use standards for those uses that required them or warranted them. Um, and then updating their parking requirements, cause it's a dense borough, the street parking, we didn't see the need for, you know. Giant suburban-style parking lots with new development. They were kinda seeing that as an impediment on the main street. No idealization efforts. Uh, otherwise, Parks and Open Stated Base Plan Implementation, which admittedly was mostly Chloe before me. Since then, really, all we've done is review the um, the draft plans as they're getting towards input uh construction at Beeler Park. This is that plan that we reviewed. Um, so that, I believe, got a Monco twenty-fourty grant and a D V R B C grant, so this is getting built. Uh, hopefully shortly, it's, I believe it's going out for bid soon. Um, and this is the final plan that they're moving forward with, very similar to what Barry had drafted um in their Parks and Open Space Plan in twenty-nineteen. Uh, and then Main Street Design Guidelines is kind of the biggest effort, which I'll get to more in the next slide. Um, but that'll probably go through the next six months or so, and that's something we started um probably six months ago at this point too. And then lastly, they want to look at historic preservation broadly. At this point, we don't know what kind of regulation they wanna go with, but they're very interested in it, uh, you know, in concepts.
Are there a lot of this borough building?
Um, there, there's a fair amount, yeah, and actually, most of the buildings on Main Street were built between eighteen fifty-five and nineteen thirty. There's, I think, they said only two new twins, so four new, or two new buildings on their main street. Yeah, yeah, they're very focused on their main street. So, uh, you know, they vary with how much integrity there is left with those buildings, but there's been a lot of uh, not-so-good re, runouts, but. Um, some stuff's intact. Their main street is about three-quarters of a mile, going from Pensberg to Upper Hanover. Um, it's Route twenty-nine, a gravel pipe, but it's called Main Street in East Greenville. Um, again, this is one of those pictures from the saldo. Um, and kind of the whole idea for them was taking saldo and zoning requirements and putting it into a more user-friendly document. So there's a lot of graphics, a lot of examples and pictures of best practices. Um, so we kinda lay it out with regulation, explanation, and then our ideal, which might go above and beyond the regulation itself. Um, one factor that kind of um complicates the process is the fact that there are three disowning districts, which vary from. Just residential to their commercial district. And here's just a picture of like one of their, maybe their most iconic building um in their commercial area. So as you can see, there is that not-so-good renovation of filling in the big window area, but.
What did that building used for?
Right now, it's a church, actually. The entirety of the building is a church. It was originally, I think, a Knights of Columbus meeting area, so there used to be basketball courts on Opera Stories. I was promised a tour soon, so we'll see. The document was really based on the Schwenksville framework, so going through existing conditions, past planning efforts and kind of what, what spurred this project. Um, and then just visioning for the the main street corridor down the line. And then there's topic-specific sections, which ranges from sidewalks and crosswalks to architecture and signage. And here's just kind of a, one of the pieces of the rough draft, so these are graphics that are in the saldo, and then this kinda just explains. You know, how you should get that done ideally. And then here, I just wanted to point out a couple things. So here's the, the land use along the main street study area. Um, this is kind of the, this northern, I don't know what you wanna call it, annex of their commercial area. So there's a pretty much defunct top shopping center, I think it's empty right now, and then a public parking lot up here as well. And they have a public parking lot behind their Borough Hall. They're kind of trying to bring more attention to the use of the public parking lots in their commercial area, so it is easier for um. For businesses to open, and that was part of the zoning update as well, lowering the parking requirement and allowing you to use public parking. This is a section of the streetscape that was done, and I think the, the tens are early. Uh, are late, two, late two thousands, like in the tens-ish, um, street lamp, pavers. Not very wide sidewalk, that's just kind of because the, the age of the community. Um, this down here shows you a section that wasn't done, so these are just bricks, there's grass growing out of it. I almost tripped that, on that, uh, when I was out there with Patty and Eric and Yang Di um over the summer. Um, there's that building, and that is. That one's right here, I believe. Right there. And this shows you kind of what the ideal is, and this is just, this is what Kevin actually took by looking at the original plan. Looking at the satellite view, um, and built this into the saldo. So if there's new development on Main Street, you have to build to kind of the existing additions of streetscape that was done. Um, this is a teaser, I've been told, I'll probably come back once this whole plan is done and go through the document, but. That is all I've got for East Greenville at this time.
Any questions for them? Anybody online? I'm still on there.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you. Oh, absolutely.
Alright. Clean yourself, Scott.
Alright. Couple things I do need to mention. Uh, first, uh, wanna congratulate and recognize promotions that were uh authorized in January. And we had five uh staff members uh this, this round. Donna Karamanco, Karamanico is uh, went now recycling planner two, uh from planner one.
That's cause she drove that stuff out.
Exactly. We appreciate that, we're worried. Uh, Kevin Shavu, uh, also up here today, uh, design planner two, uh, from, from planner one. Steve Zabinski is a senior farmland preservation planner, uh, from planner two. Under that category. Uh, Brian Olshak is now a principal open space planner, from going from senior planner. And uh finally, Mike Narcoich uh is now compete community planning assistant manager two. Uh, despite Stephen's recommendations. Uh, but anyway, yeah, that, uh, all five are are great contributors, and we're happy to see them progress. Uh, also, I want to mention um from the discussion earlier on communications. Uh, coincidentally, if you will, uh, that is a concern. And one small thing that I think we uh haven't done well enough of, but are now poised to do much better. Is to institute a very strict and regular monthly update. It's called the MCPC Monthly. Uh, it will be distributed via email, we currently have thirty-five hundred recipients on that list and uh anxious to grow it. Uh, you all should be on that list, so the first edition was sent on February first. Uh, the first of the month is the target uh launch each month. So if you did not get that, make sure you double-check your inbox, but let, let us know, let Rita know. Um, and we'll make sure uh that we have the right address there. Anyway, that uh update is uh very, has been discussed extensively. Uh, it starts with a number of features, uh announcing uh upcoming events, product releases. Or any important planning news for the county. It's concise, meant to keep attention spans down, uh, highlight the most important things. And uh we also uh review a couple of items that, that may have already occurred, where we were partners in progress. Usually, it's either going out to an event or a group uh on a regional basis and having participated or presented. Uh, in that fashion, and just letting people know that that's going on. Uh, grant announcements are another uh grouping for anything that uh is on the radar and in uh present for applications. And we, if we have room, we'll highlight an existing resource or planning resource linked to it uh on the website. Uh, each month, in addition to any staff news that is uh worthwhile promoted at that time. So, uh, we hope that this uh becomes um a, a better way of getting word out. In the past, we've had what's called planning perspectives, we've had newsletters, PDF documents. Uh, while they, uh, looking back at them, some of them were very uh well-done and lots of content. It was tough getting people to see it and get the message out and keep it on a regular basis, so we feel this is the best approach for now. Um, to really make sure that the pressing items are are out in front of our audience. And our audience is is uh, the multiple aspects, there's the general public, there's our municipal officials, our managers. Uh, we're gonna try to hit, you know, the things that interest all, all of those, uh, you know, at various times. One can be geared more toward the other. Anyway, so, anyway, keep that uh, uh, in mind. Uh, we also have a uh new commissioner, Jamila Winder, was uh. Uh, installed at the last Board of Commissioners meeting, she's now the vice chair, uh with uh Ken Lawrence uh becoming the chair. Uh, other than a brief hello, uh, I am awaiting the opportunity to sit down and tell her all about the uh. Wonderful things that the Planning Commission does and how we are here to support uh both her office and her work and her constituents. Uh, so we are, that may happen any times uh now, and uh looking forward to it. The, also on the website, uh, the I I J A uh uh infrastructure funding. We have a separate webpage dedicated to that now. Uh, it highlights programs and opportunities that we felt are the most relevant to our municipal uh audience. And uh, I'm ones that we're working on, uh, as well as other links to other resources and uh, uh, things that may be helpful. So, uh, that is available on our homepage, it's been elevated to the top menu bar on the left. Uh, for anyone looking to find it. Uh, and next month, we will be having the Chester Valley Trail Ribbon Cutting. The final date and time is not uh established, but it will be around March twelfth to fifteenth. Uh, so we'll let, send out a notice when that is occurring, invite anyone who's interested in attending, but that is something we're looking forward to. And.
Sorry, um, so the ribbon cutting originally was the ninth of this month, and it's not.
Right, there were some last-minute.
That's fine, just take it off.
Fences that got added, if you wanna know, um, but it, and it's not officially open yet, so we're not encouraging people to go out on it at this time. But uh, very soon, we'll wait for, till the weather warms up a little, so we're almost there. And then uh Monco twenty-fifty, just to let you know, we are updating, uh, continuing with the background document preparation. That has gone into full swing, creating for the uh committees for, with staff for eight documents. That will become what is the existing conditions part of that effort. Uh, you'll be seeing those uh expected in June and July, uh, spread them over two meetings. And uh, we'll also, we're also talking to third-party web platform providers. Uh, we do have some budget to establish a greater public outreach aspect with, on the web. Uh, with some of those services, uh, so we're also writing an RFP, uh, having talked to them, that way, uh, su. Get to what suits our needs the best and, and result in the um product that we'll wanna implement in the summer. And the National Planning Conference is April second through fourth. First through fourth, first on Saturday? Okay, uh, watch my calendar. Uh, and it, it is in Philadelphia, as we've said before. Uh, I'll probably give you more details at the March meeting, just way closer. But know that we have now received notice, I think we have five educational sessions with staff presenting. Uh, eight local workshops that involve uh one or more staff members. Uh, and a few others that are in Montgomery County that we may not necessarily be involved with. And we're also fortunate through the budget, we uh anticipate being able to send up to fifteen staff members. Uh, it's not a, not, not an inexpensive conference, uh, but the opportunity being here is important. And those presenting you participating uh allow us to stretch our dollars uh for that, but. Uh, I'm excited about that. Uh, I think that's where I'll be.
Any uh parting comments from board members online? Bob, let's see, Bob, Jonathan?
No comment, Stephen, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.